Call the November fourteenth County Council meeting to order. First item of business after the call to order is the approval of the agenda. Items on the agenda that need to be discussed are item number two point one. Four point one. Four point two. Five point four. Five point five, six point one and six point two, seven point two. Eight point one. Nine point one is with council's permission, the addition of one called step application. That's nine point one step application addition with your consent, ten point one X and all of number eleven. Are there other items to be added? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I'd like to add three point two.
Okay, three point two.
Five point two.
Five point two.
And five point five.
And five point five. Okay, customers, I know you had.
I'd like to add five point one.
Five point one. Uh, seven. Oh, there. Yeah, sorry, seven point nine and seven point ten are on the must. Well, yeah, we should talk about those. Are there other items? I'll go through the list again. But customer means.
Actually got to. Number seven point six.
Seven point six, okay?
Please.
Because you're.
Seven point seven.
Seven point seven. Are there are other additions from the floor? Counselor Holland, five point five is already on. I know we talked about that. Did you have any?
No, I'm all good. Thank you.
So from the top, I have number two point one. Three point two. Four point one, four point two, five point one, five point two, five point four. Five point five, six point one, six point two, seven point two, seven point six, seven point seven. Seven point nine, seven point one zero, eight point one. Nine point one is the addition of step application. There's a time sensitive nature to that. And then under reports, ten point one X. And all of number eleven, that's eleven, one, two, three and four. Any other items, customers?
Uh, the other one would be. Uh, the Alice one, which can use up.
Are the reports?
Yeah, under reports, because I think they're all from medical.
Another ten point one D.
Boy. And then ten.
And then I'll move the agenda. Customer means has moved the agenda as amended. Are there any further comments? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the agenda as amended, all those in favor?
I.
That is nine and zero. The motion is adopted. Um, as we get started, I wanted to just quickly share with council before moving on to the first item, which I meant I had this at the top. Just um, the exciting news as it relates to the Boyle Regional Healthcare Center on Saturday, I had the pleasure of meeting Frederick, who is one of the first of two internationally educated nurses. He's in Athabasca this week. He starts the uh, the, the, the training or orientation. I don't know what it's called, climatization. And um, so that's exciting news for the community. It seems like. We're on track to see the uh, return to service on that facility early in the new year. The next nurse is scheduled to come in the next few weeks. Three point two, Counselor Anderson, you added that in. Counselor. Champion. That's three point two. Whoa. There we are.
Thank you. I'd like to move the approval of the minutes from the October twenty sixth Friday, your county council meeting with the following amendments. I uh, noticed that item five point one and seven point four were adopted in the consent agenda. But the resolutions CC twenty three, five eighty six and resolution. CC twenty three, five ninety six do not. Um, they're not exact copies of the recommended motions from our agenda package. So I just like those amended to read exactly as they were adopted.
So the, there's uh, twenty two, five. Five, eight, six and twenty two, five, nine, six were. Will be adjusted to read the way they were written in the consent agenda. Any further discussion on the on that motion? On the question, the adoption of the minutes, anybody with questions about understanding what changed? On the question, the adoption of the minutes as amended, all those in favor?
I.
Nine and zero, and the motion is adopted. We have delegations coming, but not for a little while, so we'll move on. Counselor Minz, five point one, he wanted to.
Yes, I'd like to uh, uh, move the motion. For five point one on the water for life application on the lake waterline project. That Athabasca County Council supports and directs administration to make an application to the water for life program for the island lake waterline extension project. For the preferred option of a reserve reservoir at Baptiste Lake. And also the, the Athabasca County Council. Requests the Water Commission, Athabasca Regional Water Commission and regional partners to examine and recommend the cost recovery plan for the regional partners for their share of the initial. Ten percent committed commitment required for the application to the water for life application.
Counselor Minz has moved the motion as recorded in your agenda package that the council supports and directs admin to make the application for water for life. For the island lake waterline extension project with the preferred option being the reservoir at Baptiste Lake. And the council um, requests the Water Commission and regional partners examine and recommend a cost recovery plan from the regional partners for their share of the initial ten percent. Commitment for the application. Any discussion on that issue? Councilmen, you moved it. You have the floor.
Yes, I'd like to uh, just say how, 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 what a great. Move forward this is for uh, Athabasca County for the Water Commission for the regional area. And uh, working together with the summer villages out west of Athabasca is uh, has been very rewarding also in that and. Uh, thank counsel for actually putting me on this committee and not and, and. We are looking at having a meeting, another Zoom meeting here on the sixteenth on Thursday, just to discuss this a little bit more. The other thing I'd like to uh, say is uh, thank our C O, Mr. Beck for his uh, help in moving this forward. It was a, it was a. Great addition to this. So, yeah, I'm, I'm looking very forward to having more discussions regarding this and, and. And this is just the beginning in my, in my eyes, the beginning of. Getting more infrastructure in, in Athabasca County and looking at going to. Uh, Rochester and looking at going to Casland is just another. You know, just another big step. More infrastructure we can put in here regarding water, the better off the whole, the whole region is so. Thank you.
Other comments? You know, Councilor, Counselor Gerlick, then Holland.
Yeah, I hope there's going to be a lot further discussion on this because I read these things over. Three times and I'm not so sure I knew much more now than I knew before I started reading it and. Anyway. There's a lot there.
Uh, Counselor Holland.
Thank you. It's just a comment really just to say congratulations to Councilmen's and to C O back and all those involved. Job well done. Thank you.
You know. The projects like this, we talk a lot about economic development and projects like this are, in my opinion, key to. If continuing to provide. Opportunities for economic development. I think that's one of our, our jobs is to create an environment where the, the region can grow and, and part of that is providing the right infrastructure. And certainly for things like the Water Commission. Finding ways to increase the volume of water that the commission can, can move and sell is the only way. The, the, the best way to get the water rates lower. And so adding the potential for uh, more customers is a, is a big deal. And then the other thing I had as a note is that I just want to compliment the C O on the format. I, I. Personally really like the, the adjustment in the format of the administrative report that, that you've presented in this case. On any further comments? On the question of the adoption of the motion that the council supports and directs seed men to make an application to the water for life program for the island lake line extension project. For the preferred option with the reservoir at Baptiste. And that council requests the Water Commission and regional partners examine and recommend a cost recovery plan for the initial ten percent commitment. Uh, required for the application to the water for life program. All those in favor?
Right.
That motion is adopted nine and zero. Five point two, Counselor Anderson, you added this.
Thank you. Um, before I make a motion, I'd like to know. Does administration have the capacity to prepare the required resources to have an open house for our budget this quickly?
Sorry, C O, I actually had it all even to ask you to speak to this one first before I saw the motion.
Um. Ms. Chairman, um, through to Deputy Reeve Anderson, you know, we've had a bit of discussion about this internally. Is that fair to say? Uh, Jordan, um, and with the uh. Director Turner Chan and um, we're a little worried that if we hold it, we're going to be wasting people's time. And that we don't, we hate wasting people's time. Uh, we'd have some. Things to put up, some boards to print, but. The questions we're asked is just going to be so general. I, we're not sure we're going to get much back because we really don't have a draft budget to talk about by then. So we, we just. It's a fair question to ask and um, more of our time, we don't want to waste the public's time. So we're not sure we'd be prepared. I, I hope I answered your question.
Based on um. Status of that, do you have a motion?
Yes. I'd like to direct administration to bring forth proposed dates for a budget open house in January or February. As well as um, a brief description of what information or format council could expect to see for that open house. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson has made a motion to direct administration to bring back to council proposed, to, to bring back to council proposed dates in January or February. For a budget um, open house. And a brief description also of the information that council could expect at those meetings. Do you want to speak to it, C O?
Um, Ms. Chairman, um, no problem with the motion. At the same time, I think what we'd like to do is bring back an item. Outlining uh, best practices for public input on budgets, budgets for, because I think we're, we're kind of the way we've talked about it. We're just looking at our. All the usual comparators that we look at, and they usually shoot for a different time of the year. And they do a public survey and an open house at the same time because um, in our experience, unfortunately, here maybe locally, I understand. Open house participation is a little bit. Um, hit and miss, but maybe public surveys might be more um, easy to uh, to get some buy in into or uh, so. I think what we talked about was maybe we'd also in the item bring back maybe best practice, best time of year, and even if we had to write it in policy. Um, from now on, we will do this as part of our budget process each year and kind of maybe regiment it and. Usually it's closer to summer um, or early after the summer break. It's a lot of places do it before the summer break or right after the summer break. After council has seen a bit of a draft budget, um, but we'll bring back something to that effect.
The customer means.
Uh, thank you. I like that idea of a uh, of a survey first to, to actually. I think it gets people thinking. Gets the information out there in front of them prior to the, prior to the discussion that could happen and, and get some thinking and then. If we get a good survey back, uh, possibly have a open host then or that, and maybe that might draw more people in at that point in time. So I think that's a very good idea. Thank you.
Other, other comments at the. Ms. Blair, would you be willing to read back the motion the way you've got it typed for me? If there's no further discussion, I'll, we'll move to calling the question.
So I don't.
Moved by Counselor Anderson to direct administration to bring forth proposed dates in January or February for a budget open house and to.
Bring a brief description of. The format that council could expect and other relevant information. So on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor?
Right.
Nine and zero, and the motion is adopted. Five point four. C O, did you want to speak to this one? Before we open the floor?
Um, Ms. Chairman, I will uh. Refer to uh, Director Wilkinson. That's the M red application.
In red application, yeah.
Um, yeah, so administration talked about this at length and um. Our recommendation is that uh, the application goes sort of in two areas, uh. A couple of feasibility studies, one looking at strengthening cellular coverage throughout and within the boundaries of the county as well as um. Uh, looking at a multi-year plan to improve, enhance and possibly expand our county campgrounds and boat launches. Um, the, this type of feasibility study certainly fits in with um, the. The direction of the grants. Um, so uh, you know, our previous application was a laundry list of things. And uh, we felt that it's important to focus on a couple of really key things within our municipality.
Thank you. Council, there's no clear recommendation. Is there anybody that has a motion in mind? Counselor Wallack, our comment?
Just a comment. Um, I understand the, like, I like the two studies. I think that's great, but. Knowing that we can take full advantage of this grant with all the projects that could be placed under it. Um, some of the capital projects that could potentially be coming in. Um, just knowing that we could fully utilize that two hundred thousand dollar match. If we can, that's a lot of money for our taxpayers and just making sure that we totally utilize all of the grant.
C O.
Yeah, Ms. Chairman, um, there's a good chance that these two studies would take the entire amount that we would get. It's. They're too big projects. So that's what we were thinking was we'll probably use every, every penny of those of that grant.
Customs.
I, I like the idea of uh, of. The feasibility studies regard regarding the, the county campgrounds, boat launches and that, even digging into it more where. And, and, and it's going to take time and it's going to take a lot of time to, to deal with. Environment and that to, so we can. When we put a boat launch in. We can actually. Do a reasonably good or very good boat launch. So we're not going back to every couple of years because. Chains of breaking or something like that and things are moving. So, so, yeah, I'm, I'm. I'm uh. Very happy with, with the way this, this looks for the feasibility studies on both sides. I'm willing to make a motion or, or Counselor Wallack, you want to make?
Counselor.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to direct administration to um. Apply for the Northern Economic Development Grant with the feasibility studies for improving cellular coverage. And a feasibility study to look at a multi-year plan to improve and enhance and possibly expand our county campgrounds and boat launches.
In terms of language, would you be okay with show cellular and broadband?
Sure.
I think that's a typical language we've used. So Counselor Wallack has moved uh, that we direct administration to apply for the Northern uh, Regional Economic Development Grant. To conduct a feasibility study to improve and strengthen cellular and broadband coverage within the region. Within the boundaries of the municipality and a feasibility study to look at the multi-year plan to improve, enhance and possibly expand county campgrounds and boat launches. Uh, discussion, Counselor Holland, your own, your first up, right?
Thank you. Just curious about the boat launches. I think these are excellent um, uh, choices that, that administration has made. I was just curious about the boat launches. Are they strictly for lakes or are we going to possibly look for a location for the river as well?
Uh, we could certainly include that as part of the feasibility study.
I think, thank you. I think that that would be amazing as um, we all know that the jet voter uh, population is, is quite extensive in the region. Um, and we do have issues with the uh, boat launch in the town of Athabasca and the struggles that people are seeing there. So thank you very much for considering that as an addition.
Uh, further discussion. Everybody's really quiet. On, if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion. To direct administration to apply for the N red grant to conduct a feasibility study to improve and strengthen cellular and broadband coverage. Throughout and within the boundaries of the municipality and a feasibility study to look at a multi-year plan to improve, enhance and possibly expand county campgrounds and boat launches. All those in favor?
Right.
That is nine and zero. Oh, I was supposed to ask opposed. Nine and zero. We learned that, didn't we, Coach Cromwell?
I was waiting for a moment interrupt and add in the pose just for fun.
Um. The next item on your agenda is number five point five. This is uh, grant opportunities. This was uh, this stems out of the budget and finance meeting. And uh, there's no clear motion, but Counselor Holland, do you want to lead the initial discussion this?
Um, I, I just think it's extremely important that we um, voice our concern to the federal government regarding their uh, choice to allow some. Uh, Canadian provinces to have a, a break on their carbon tax for heat. Um, we all know that the um. Rebates have been extended to those provinces as well this year, and so therefore I would like to see uh. You know, some, some, something that administration can put together that will voice our, our concern of the unfairness of, of that choice.
That's Anderson, you want? We've.
I'd like to make a motion to direct administration. To send a letter in support of the provincial advocacy efforts to eliminate the carbon tax on home heating.
Counselor Anderson has moved to we, uh, direct administration to send a letter in support of the provincial advocacy efforts.
To eliminate the carbon.
Eliminate the carbon tax on home heating.
And I don't think the list of recipients needs to be in the motion.
Okay, uh, so the motion is to direct administration to send a letter of support of the province's advocacy efforts to eliminate the carbon tax on home heating. The floor is open for discussion. I'll lead this one. I mean, it's a little bit tougher choice. I mean, I normally don't do that because I won't. But ultimately. Um, for me, the problem comes in where we have a, we have a situation where things are being applied inequitably across the country. And creating division between regions. And I don't think that's, that's reasonable. We have people in the West that are suffering and pay, um, you know, massive amounts of uh. Carbon tax on their home heating. And so either we're all in it together or we're not, but it's for me, it's a. Rather all in it together and, and this, what appears to be a cynical attempted vote buying is um. Not on for me. Um. And you know, as it relates to the, the issue, we collect a tax that is supposed to feed back to our region through. The Green Municipal Fund, um, and the applications that the county or connected uh, bodies are. Have out, we've had so far, um, just crickets in terms of the response. And so, you know, as we think this through, that's something that we'll have to bring back to the table at a future time. I recognize it's off topic, but. We need, we need to continue to advocate for that stuff because they're, they're connected. Check mark by me. Okay, anyone else want to talk? Coster Gerlick.
Yeah, I think a little irony there in the fact that the heating fuel, the heating oil is. Is the, not as clean burning as natural gas and. And you know, some of our options, you gotta heat your house in the winter time, and yet really have, don't have the options. So I don't know where applying a tax to it. Really is achieving. Achieving all like a lot. Uh, I mean, we don't have the electrical grids in place to produce. The kind of power or the kind of electricity that is required for, uh, for E Vs and all these things. So there's a strain on the whole system. Uh, to, to get new sources and, and it's just way premature to be taxing when there aren't too many options. So it's kind of a senseless tax and it's unfair.
Uh, if you move the motion, so I'll give you the final word, but is there anybody else that wants to? Sorry, Counselor Holland, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I just wanted a bit of clarity. Um. Am I accurate in uh, the fact that the carbon tax is also taxed by GST?
Yes, G, I noticed that on my bills and it always. I find it that. Odd that the carbon tax is neither a good or a service and I'm paying. Like the layering of it doesn't seem right, but.
Yeah, I'm wondering if that is something we can add to uh, the body of the letter just to mention the ridiculousness of taxing a tax.
So to Counselor Holland has made an amendment to um. Is there any opposition to just uh, adding a comment of opposition to GST on top of the carbon tax? And if not, through unanimous consent, we'll modify that motion.
Thank you.
Ms. Blair, can you weave that in? Um, just uh, so send a letter of support of the pro, of the province's advocacy efforts to eliminate the carbon tax on home heating. And uh, voice our opposition to paying GST on top of the carbon tax. And uh, oh, it's not in the motion. Counselor Anderson, I did talk about this a little bit earlier this morning and. She had a kind of a list of people and I'll give the floor to you for a final word before we call the question.
Yeah, I think uh, if written correctly, the letter doesn't need to be partisan or in favor of one specific political um. Party is advocating for our residents. We understand that their costs are of home heating are a necessity. Here and just to make sure that we're doing what we can, a letter is probably not going to change everything, but at least we're voicing our support for that. And uh, the list that I had jotted down, uh, potential recipients would be Premier Donnell Smith, M L A's Glenn Van Dyken. And Brian Jean, Minister Rebecca Schultz, P M Justin Trudeau and Minister Gibo. So just a, just a few that. It's, it's something that we can do.
Okay. On the question of the adoption of the motion to send a letter in support of the province's advocacy to eliminate carbon tax on home heating. And to further voice our opposition to paying GST on top of the carbon tax. All those in favor?
Right.
That motion is adopted nine and zero. It's gonna take a while to use to call him for, once we get nine. So Counselor Cromwell, for uh, the benefit of uh. Paul. And I and some others were at a, a learning session that they were parliamentarian talked about uh, meeting procedure and. The idea is that even when you have a nine and zero vote, uh, the chair should be calling uh, for those in opposition, even though. Initially there were none, just in case someone happens to change their mind between the moment when you say all those in favor and all those opposed. Uh, fear. I had a watch a show the other night said, talked about the mind of a goldfish being uh, you know, memory of a, you know, a couple of nanoseconds and. I don't know. You forgot which way you voted. You want to vote yes and then opposed, I guess it's. It's possible, or it's possible just to change your mind. Uh, number, we are next up at six point one. Holy smokes. This is the uh, non-residential assessment subclassification by law. Um, it is, we moved first reading last time. Is there someone willing to move second reading? Counselor Cromwell and then.
So moved.
Counselor Cromwell has moved second reading of bylaw zero, one, two, two, zero, two, three. Is there any discussion? Seeing done on the question of the adoption of the motion to move second reading of zero, one, two, two, zero, two, three, all those in favor? That all is opposed. The most, the motion is adopted eight and one.
I, I apologize. That was a late, I was in favor. I apologize.
That's okay. Sorry. We'll go with thumbs up or thumbs down. Uh, so the, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Uh, is there any appetite to move third reading or do we want to hold that for another meeting to give more chance for input? Counselor Gerlick, you had your hand up last time. Did you want to move third reading?
I would.
Okay. I would. Hey, Counselor Gerlick has moved third reading of the uh, bylaw zero, one, two, two, zero, two, three. Councillor Gerlick has moved third reading of the uh bylaw zero one two two zero two three. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion to move third reading of zero one two two zero two three, the non-residential. Subclassification, all those in favor?
Right.
All those opposed, the motion count, the motion is adopted, the count is nine and zero. Item number six point two in front of you is uh proposed first reading of a land use bylaw amendment, bylaw number zero one three two zero two three. It's normally we pass these just as a matter of routine so that we can move it forward to a public hearing. Is there anyone willing? To move the motion, councillor Chamsik?
Yes, the recommended motion, please.
Councillor Chamsik has moved uh to give first reading to bylaw zero one three two zero two three. A line use bylaw amendment for the northeast thirteen sixty-two twenty-four west of the fourth from urban reserve to agricultural district. And further to directed men to advertise a public hearing on December twelfth, nine thirty AM for that bylaw. Is there any discussion on the matter? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? That posed. Councillor Cromwell, you were in favor. Okay, uh the motion is adopted, the count is nine and zero. Hey, we're at a, well, we should be at ten o'clock. The clocks says we're eleven, but that'll trick us when it comes close to lunch. We have um and a. Oh, it's at eleven, so I guess we're good. Not at eleven, but. We're at item number seven point two, committee appointments. Councillor Cromwell, do you want to open the discussion on this, the the recommendation?
One moment, please. And then I will happily begin discussion on that.
So just as a matter of clarity, that the procedural bylaw doesn't expressly permit or uh multiple organizational meetings. Council has actually held the meeting as outlined in the bylaw, but. Outside of the organizational meeting. Council has discretion to amend committee appointments at its uh. At its discretion. Councillor Cromwell, the floor is yours.
Thank you. After. Looking at the committee points and how it was laid out, I am concerned about the inequality and the inability for everyone to have a voice and to represent. Uh not only their area, but the county as a whole. And how these appointments are. Can be construed as very lopsided. Uh the concern then comes in now that the. Now remuneration was edited after committee appointment. Uh just the the growing inequality between. Some councillors and others, and I would like that list to be more. Uh fair across the board as there are. A multitude of quarterly, monthly caller chair, bi-monthly positions. Uh should be more. Fairly distributed.
Councillor, what you're weaving? Councillor Anderson, the floor is yours.
Yeah. We've previously discussed a desire to appoint members to each committee who strengthen that border committee. Um and I stand by that decision. We have a strong council because of our diversity. And we need to continue to utilize our strengths where we can. Our new council remuneration policy was specifically formatted to ensure that council members were fairly compensated for the work that they're performing. And the expenses that they incur while performing that work. And uh with our new strategic plan and our new CAO now in place. We've started to generate some great momentum. And I think it's time to focus on our strategic goals and stop trying to distract from the progress we're making with these personal agendas.
Councillor Minz, is your hand up?
It's just like an auction, man, you're. Councillor Holland, I'm looking at you.
I'll find things.
Sorry, we can hear your voices a little off.
Yeah, sorry about that.
You know, by the, by the nature of committee appointments, councillors are, I think, always limited in where they can represent the municipality council count, you know, can't all be on every committee. And um we choose an assigned committee representation based on majority vote. We seems to me that most committees are filled by people. I've talked to a number of people about this just over time, how most committees are filled by people who have sort of a particular interest in that. That area. And are in the work of the committee. And so in that regard, I I think we're pretty fortunate as a group because we have no. No apparent voids where there's something that we are part of that there's zero interest in. So there's uh this alignment between interests and opportunities. And you know, I would note that most of the um committee appointments were by unanimous vote. So. Um I'm not sure where you want to go with this, but there's no motion on the floor if you want to make one or if we want to just accept it for information and move on. Councillor. On the question on uh the motion to accept for information, is there further discussion?
My only discussion be strongly opposed to that motion.
Hey, since there's no other discussion on the question of the uh adoption of the motion to accept the. Uh RFD for information, all those in favor? All those opposed. The count is seven and two and a motion to accept for information is adopted. Item number seven point six is a wildfire prevention grant. I can't remember who put that on. I think that was councillor Minz. Do you want to move a motion?
There is it. I guess uh. Just trying to find it.
It's on page one twenty-eight.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the RFD was prepared by councillor Holland.
Right. But it it was headed for the consent agenda until councillor Minz asked it to come off, so my. Usual habit unless I forget or I'm distracted is to um. If you've put it on, I'll. Go with.
Just a a discussion for just a question first, is is administration going to have enough time to apply for this grant?
So administration, do you, there's a recommendation to apply for a grant? Do you have the capacity to? Make that happen?
Um, well, we introduced our new grant writer this morning, so um. I think that uh we will be pursuing lots of new grants. And I would say that uh we likely have the capacity to pursue this one.
Thank you. And and as a, as a, you know, uh. Food for thought for all of us, I think, um as I think about how we. Work, um we should. We should always put some thought into, do we have the capacity to do the good things we want to do and? And I'll try, you know, I've got a note for myself to try to be conscious about asking that more with all motions, but councillor Minz, the floor was yours, do you? Want to move the motion?
Yeah, I'll move the motion, the recommended motion.
Councillor Minz has made a motion to request administration apply for the uh Walwenisa Community Fire Prevention Grant. And using their discretion determine which fire smart uh disciplines are best to focus on and further report back to council if successful. Is there any further discussion or any discussion, sorry, on that motion? Councillor.
Um, I know we we received this email um from, I think, administration, uh just making sure that. Uh all the fire departments were made aware of this because it looks like they could apply as well.
Seeing no further hands going up, I assume you're ready for the question. On the question of the adoption of the motion to request admin apply for the Walwenisa Community Fire Prevention Grant. Using their discretion and determine which fire smart disciplines are best to focus on and further report back to council if successful, all those in favor? I. Opposed. The count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Seven point seven councillor Wallack, you put that on.
Yeah, I guess just a question to admin. How come we're appointing here not at the committee level since we have members at large?
Uh, because the. The the act states council is determined the chair and the number of members and the voting status in term of office, so it's a council responsibility. But uh admin, if you want to add to that answer, I'd be happy to have you jump in.
No, as chairman, you, you got it right, the access council most appoint.
Is there someone willing to move the motion? Should we go to someone who's not one of them? Councillor Kapitanic? Councillor Kapitanic has moved that we extend the term of the ASB chairs, Wallack and vice chair Chamsik for a year. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I assume you're ready for the question. The question is on the adoption of the motion to appoint chair. Councillor Wallack as chair of ASB and councillor Chamsik as vice chair for a year. All those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is, oh, opposed? Okay, so we're gonna say the motion is adopted. Councillor Gerlick, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I did see an ad in the paper for a one-year position again for for ASB. And we're gonna end up with two one years.
Yeah, and you and I talked about this last time, um so is it administration, can you just clarify for council while we're on the subject of ASB, is the ad going out for a single year?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, it is out for one year as per the way that the board was set up originally.
So I I think that the um the setup of the board was, the terms are to be three years. But in order to ensure that you don't have everybody rotating out all at once. When we brought members at large in, the first appointments were for one, two and three year. And following that, every renewal would be for a three-year term. So that's something we should correct.
We we had planned on bringing back the terms of reference to the ASB's next meeting for review. Uh, that's not how they got written down originally. So it may need that the terms of reference will have to come back to council, uh if that's what the intent of it was.
Would it be appropriate for council to provide direction right now to modify the ads that the next appointment is for a three-year term outside of the terms of reference?
My recommendation would be that when we bring the appointments to council.
We can just do it then.
We just appoint for the three years, we'll reach out to applicants and confirm that they're all right with that concept before bringing them for your consideration.
Okay, yeah, because when, when we started, there were a number of committees that the um. All the members at large kind of expired at the same time and, you know, this group. Thought that that was not wise in terms of continuity and and sharing uh knowledge forward, so. Councillor Gerlick, does that satisfy your? Councillor Holland, he said it does. Uh, what are we on next? Number seven point nine and ten, we have to skip over. Let's move all the way up to uh eight point one calendars. That's on page one forty-five. Uh, some point it wasn't on. Unless you wanted it on. Uh so calendars, um I have one addition that is backdated yesterday, but that's the North Alberta Alliance for Growth and Opportunity was yesterday in Chipman. If you want to add that to the calendar, just as a matter of making sure the record exists that it happened. Are there any other um? Any changes to November or December, councillor Cromwell, the floor is yours.
The Northern Lake College from the twenty-third has been moved to the twenty-seven.
Okay, Northern Lakes uh from the twenty-third moved to the twenty-seventh. Is there anything else? Councillor Cromwell? Councillor Gerlick? I'll work around the table. So I just councillor uh Capitan was waving and I'm just saying I'll work around the table, you go first. Okay, we'll come back to you. Councillor Gerlick, you want me to circle back? Okay, councillor Kapitanic with your microphone on, with with your microphone on.
I have it in my calendar, but it's not on there.
Um, are the week, the policy meeting on the sixteenth was cancelled. Because uh the question about administrative capacity came up and there's a discussion between.
No problem, that's all I want to know.
Councillor Anderson? You're good? Councillor Wallack? We got it, it's pretty terrible this time, councillor Chamsik, nothing, councillor Minz?
I just got that uh. On the sixteenth, the morning at ten thirty, uh the uh waterline extension. Uh Zoom meeting.
Waterline Zoom, okay. Councillor Holland?
All good, thanks.
All good, councillor Gerlick circling back?
Yeah.
I figured out where my problem was and I know, know that it does not exist.
Go ahead and solve problems, that's what we do every day. Hopefully. Councillor Kapitanic, I'll get you to shut your mic off and. Unless you're gonna move that we adopt the calendars as amended. Councillor Kapitanic has made a motion to adopt the calendars as amended. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
All those opposed, the motion is adopted nine and zero. Nine point one um relates to step applications, uh we are. Working on uh the counties work on a number step applications. The assumption is that all the ones that went in last year that were not approved are going to go back in. And then there's been some work with uh Alpac on the. Uh resource road bridge. I'm not sure um. But because we've not, as a council previously said, we want to push that in. Uh I think I asked. The CAO and Director Whaley to be kind of prepared to talk about it briefly. Um in discussion with the chief of staff for uh transportation economic corridors. Budgets are being worked on right now. This is a time to make sure we've got our asks in place and so. The suggestion to me was that we uh should have our applications in right away. So that's why that's on the agenda today because. We don't have uh. The the timing to wait till the the next council meeting in the end of November is too far. Uh director or CAO, do you want to speak to that briefly or?
Chairman, you explained it.
Councillor Gerlick?
Chairman, do you? Do you have to have your projects completed before you apply for more projects or?
Uh I don't believe so, but I, there's people understand that. Someone who's done it before was shaking their head and saying no. Because I I think we have a a couple of years to to spend that money and to work that project out. Councillor Holland, no, councillor Minz?
So the the stiff funding that we have applied for and have been granted that. Those, those uh jobs are still ongoing, right?
And there's an update coming at the committee of the whole meeting um. On. Next week.
Okay.
To go through all of those, and I wasn't going to put the director on the spot with that because I understand she'd been away from the office for. Oh, there you go. Okay, then the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, on the um grants received previously um. On uh Bridge File one three one one nine, uh that's uh culvert replacements uh has just had its final inspection last week and is done. Um, on one three three eight three, which is the Splain Bridge, the tender is prepared and ready to go out in the new year. Um. I did ask why we can't tender earlier, but uh companies aren't holding their prices for more than sixty days. And we can't do the work until uh well after a sixty-day timeline, so. Um, Bridge seven zero five zero two, uh which is a culvert replacement. Uh has just had a change order uh due to a fish catch and release requirement that's been added. Uh so that's just been moved upstream and we've just changed, we've just signed that change order. Uh on zero nine nine three six, um seven five one six five seven three zero eight one. And seven five one six five, uh those are all culvert replacements, they uh final reports have all come in. And are being approved so that the the detailed design can be done and they'll be ready to be tendered. Uh in the spring, um seven six two seven six is ready for tender now. And I'm waiting for an update on seven seven four ten, which is also a culvert replacement.
Councillor Minz? And the ones that are ready for tender now, those will go out when?
Uh, within a sixty-day timeline of being able to actually do the work.
Perfect, okay, which is later.
Yes.
Thank you very much for that. And so on the step application, part of the idea is that um. If we're going to look for the funds and and again, this will come back for greater discussion, but in order for me to sign a step app, I. Felt more comfortable bringing it to you for a conversation first. Um if if we're awarded the money and we, our priorities change and for some reason we, that doesn't make the top three. We can reject the grant, but we can't. Do the work with a grant that we don't apply for and don't get. So we, it's, we gotta kind of put the card ahead just a little bit here. Hey, um is there someone willing to? Hey, um, is there someone willing to make a motion to Counselor Holland? Do you want to speak or make a motion?
Make a motion, please, except for.
Um, we we need a motion to authorize me to sign the step up. So um. Counselor Holland uh, has made a motion to authorize Reeve to sign the step application for the resource road bridge, which the number we can fill in, cuz I don't know it. Eight one one two nine. Is there any further discussion? Okay, and remembering that this will come back for greater council discussion later. On the question of the adoption of the motion to authorize Reeve to sign this step application for Bridge File eight one one two nine, all those in favor?
I.
That opposed, the motion is adopted nine and zero. Um, we have. We have lots of time. So we, well, I I'll I'll confess, I was actually hoping that we'd take a coffee break before uh, I had to do the report on the Northeast Alliance and growth. So I could quickly review my notes and get the highlights ready for you. Um, so if you're, everyone's okay with taking, let's say, ten minutes. Go have a. Let's go, we'll go back till half past ten or half past eleven on the old time. In Saskatchewan, half past ten in Alberta, half past ten in Saskatchewan.
The meeting back to order. Okay, calling the meeting back to order at half past ten, councillor Minns, we are at the section ten point one D reports. Your first.
You have twenty five minutes.
Well, hopefully it won't take that long. I don't want to steal your thunder, but but. But had a Alice meeting on November eighth in Barhead County office. Everything went very well. We looked at. Some new projects actually went over. Oh. Over budgeted projects. There was one that. That was allotted a little bit more money just due to the fact of. Some some budgeting errors, not much and then. Two non non completed projects that they have to reply for. One thing is if you apply for a project and you start on it and you don't. Finish the project in one year. You can reply for that project again. But you won't get money for the money that you spent. You won't get reimbursed for that. It's you. You have one year to do this project in. So that's and and people that are apply for projects are told that. That that, you know, get her done and and stuff like that. So. So and then so in this coming spring, we we had twelve projects came up. Three that were on shelter belts, four that were on. Wildlife pollinator projects. That's where pond levelers and 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 pollinator. The bee thing come in bad houses, stuff like that. Actually, there was one point project on that was. Was some more duck houses. Duck nesting hoses is kind of cool. That's a that's a point project where. We pay for about half of half of what the it costs to build these nests, but there's no. There's no acreages taken out or anything like that, just due to the fact that how do you? How do you take out a whole lake? But but it's 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 a very, very. Nifty project there by putting on by young gentleman. And then we had four reparian projects that we that we passed to. So. So things are moving along very well in the Alice end. It's in twenty twenty two. We had thirteen projects, twenty three. We had sixteen and twenty four. We got twelve. So things are moving very long and that's with the three municipalities.
Questions for.
Ask a question. How many of them were strictly in.
Now. That I can recall and and so we're we're held by by. To stay anonymous, but you can, you know, you can kind of tell through through where these projects are placed at and everything. It looks like there's three in Athabasca County. So and. There's one that's that's actually a kind of like the same thing that happened in division four. On a project there where there's. You know, there there's an issue between two landowners and and these pond levelers. One, if not two pond levelers to go in and to mediate between the two landlords and it's. These pond levelers are actually, they're they're going great guns and and a lot of these municipalities now, just due to the fact of the mediation between the two landowners. It's it's a way to keep the beavers, but keep the water off someone else's land. So. And for infrastructure, our infrastructure is very important to us and these pond levelers will will. Will knock the water down around bridges, culverts, places like that, so we can we can maintain them. So. So it's a it's a great it's 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 a great practice to get into.
I'm I know I'm I'm always impressed with the the work of the committee and the ability of the projects to solve problems and and create, you know, winning solutions for for. For both parties, for people who want to preserve the wildlife and and holding water is presumably good for the water table. If there's a lot of positives in the work, you know, that the committee does in your past gives you a good insight onto. Places in the county that we can continue to solve problems with these projects.
Right on.
Thanks for that. I think counts. And speaking to the one in division four, I mean, I. You know, that's been a thorn in the side of a couple of people for a generation. And if we can solve it with a couple of thousand dollars and a and a piece of pipe. It's great.
That was a huge win. That one there. Again, with my background with the county that, you know, that one there has been going on for years and years and years. And I haven't heard anything negative on that one. I've I've heard nothing but positive. So it's like holding up. If if these things can. Move the move us forward in that in that way, it's 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 tremendous.
Division four is the one that I seen on that tour. Do you foresee that a lot more of these pond leveler level it was happening towards those bridge and culverts for water mitigation and keeping our infrastructure? Do you see that momentum building? In the future?
Yeah, yeah, I I really do because they are a definite asset when 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 we were discussing these projects. The the agricultural fieldmen are there and and they're all talking and 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 they're all. Talking about putting these in and and maintaining the the areas so much easier than that. So and protecting the infrastructure and that and. One thing we did discuss a little bit too is is and and being that we have a few of these people around the table here right now as the chairman, reaching out to the chairmans of the egg societies. And that and and. We'd really like to like like in a in a meeting. Process if if Lisa, the coordinator could come up and. And at one of your one of your people's meetings there and just discuss more of the Alice. Operation going on and and what it consists of. It will help a great deal. There we're finding it the more and more information that gets out the more people are grabbing on to it.
Um. Attending one of the local egg society. Meetings. It was really awesome to have Lisa come out in the watershed as well, coming out, spreading that information, especially our whining area. So. Good on them for coming out and making themselves successful too.
Councilman, did you know what's the capacity on the Alice work? Like, is there? Is it? Is it money or is it time or is it like people resources? Could you said you're doing, do you say seventeen next year?
No, we're doing twelve next year.
And could you do twenty four like?
Thank you for asking that. That's a very good question. What's what's going on there is 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 it's not as much money right now. It's it's time. By the time they they do these projects, we're looking at like Lisa was saying. There, you know, more than. Like last year we had sixteen projects. That was just about. Just about too much because and and depending on the type of projects, if you got tree planting, if you've got these. Pollinator. Plants to do and all this stuff. It it takes a lot of time and and. And then. It's the manpower of doing that also. It's it's. They work together with the Athabasca Watershed Council, which gives them gives them employees to go out there and 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 help plant and everything. And they're always looking for. For if if somebody has a little bit of time on their side if they.
Do they use end county employees or is it all people that are connected to the like? It's not our crews and equipment out there?
The only time that we'll use our crews. As a fieldman and stuff like that is for usually just the pond levelers because they know what they're doing. That's one thing about Mr. Hercules is he's. He's well known for his pond leveler placements. So and there's two different. I found out on this Beaver Information. Session I went on in Westlock. With. The way Westlock puts in their beaver pond levelers and the way Athabasca puts in their beaver pond levelers is two different ways. So. So, you know, there's 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 goods and bads about both, but it's it's but a lot of it is 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 the not really the money. It's the time of doing these projects. So. So that's. It works. So we don't want to. If we bring on a whole bunch of more projects, we need to bring on more people, meaning another another coordinator possibly or an assistant anyway. So.
Are there other questions for councilman? Although it's a good time to 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 dig into the Alice stuff because again, we. Can see how it's doing good work in the county and solving problems. Councillor Gerlick here. Want to follow up with a question?
No, I don't. I was just wondering if you're looking for a filler to kind of fill some time.
Well, if you're going to start singing and dancing, I was going to do a report on the Northeast Alberta Alliance for Growth and Opportunity and then. And then you then we might need.
Entertain a filler. Okay, I'll patiently wait.
Okay. So the yesterday I attended the Northeast Alberta Alliance for Growth and Opportunity. That's essentially the committee that was formerly the Northeast Alberta Rares Mayors and Reeves Caucus. They. They changed the name to. Make it more more marketable probably. Last year, just before the election, you may recall there was some fundraising that occurred or some funding that we provided. And that that was specifically to draw the attention to. The condition of Highway twenty eight and economic development. At the time, we talked about basically within our region, Northeast Alberta. A huge portion of the province's GDP is generated in this area. And if you're not on Highway twenty eight, you are served by Highway twenty eight. And so our council supported that. So they they worked with an advocate or a lobbyist and they were able to get enough attention and enough momentum with that, that pre-election, the provincial government made a commitment of some money to. A look at the the future for Highway twenty eight in terms of whether it's resurfacing widening, twinning, which is probably a stretch, but. So yesterday the meeting was in Chipman. It does tend to rotate around. Part of the discussion was about the potential to rotate it in Edmonton occasionally to try to connect with. Make it a little bit easier for the MLAs who serve the region to attend. The. The interesting part is there are thirty, I want to say thirty one municipalities and nine indigenous communities, whether it's Matee Nation or First Nations. So about forty forty municipal governments that connect into this group. I think that it's. It's great in that it is a mix of urban and rural. And so we've got, you know, the village Chipman and the city of Lutminster and big counties like Bonneville and Lacklavish all. All working on the same common issues where, you know, through RMA and AUMA. Obviously, those guys do a lot of great work, but they they keep us separate and. This is a chance for that advocacy advocacy to come for the region because as you've seen here, there's really locally, we don't see the municipal boundaries. It's about the community. One of the so just reviewing the agenda for you. We've talked, spent a little bit of time talking about the terms of reference. Those will continue to be developed, but the objectives or the purpose really is. For the group, the group contributes up to a third of Alberta's GDP through significant energy, forestry and agricultural industries. The aims are to work together to advance initiatives to generate growth, improve social outcomes, secure stronger, more prosperous future for Northeast Alberta. So something we all have in common. It's to not get into the weeds on strictly local issues. That's for our council to do on our own. So the objectives basically demonstrate the importance of Northeast Alberta to provincial economy, provide a forum for information sharing. Yeah, on issues, discussions of mutual interest. And I can tell you in my experience, so working with you guys and council, I mean, sharing that information across these groups, it. Is valuable. Support, enhance information sharing. I think I read that identify and advance economic and social initiatives to strengthen the region. Through communication with the provincial government, rural municipalities, Alberta municipalities and other groups as determined by the membership. And ultimately, the 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 priorities right now are still. Still being formally nailed down, but the big the big stuff on the list, that economic corridor of Highway twenty eight. And then the infrastructure development around connectivity is big and health. So those are the kind of the top three things that that exist. Couple of things that came out of that meeting for me to bring back are for us to remember as we're budgeting. The discussion was to create a membership fee similar to the it asks you to shut your phone off or leave. Okay. Excuse me. Can you step out, please? Bob, would you ask him to? The couple of takeaways and things to bring back. So healthcare in our region is big and. So there's some subcommittees that are that are going to be struck to work on that. Bringing back to you is to consider. In our budget deliberations, making sure we include about two thousand dollars as a as a kind of a potential. But the goal is to not invoice that until there's been clarity around the terms of reference, clarity around what the goals and objectives are because there's also a thought that we may not need that kind of dollars. But because we're in budget season, everybody was encouraged to kind of take the fee we paid in last year, set that aside in budget and just have it earmarked just in case. And then it would come back obviously for a council decision if we want to move ahead. One of the interesting ideas that I I thought you would all appreciate that came up from. The mayor of the town of Eggerville. Is as we're looking for more money, we we know that the government is. Has has limitations on how much they can increase spending, but as they pay down debt, their interest costs will also decrease. And so the idea is that we as municipalities, both through RMA and AUMA. Consider going back to the provincial government and saying, well, as your interest costs decrease, we would like you to give us the the interest portion that you're saving and turn that back to municipalities. So it's a way that their spending stays flat, but they redirect where that goes. And so it helps us to. It creates a solution where municipalities are saying, we'll work with you. We know that you need to pay down your debt. But but also we have we have needs too. And and that connects into a comment that Minister Horner made in RMA. Which is in the next three years, there's about twenty five million dollars worth of debt coming due in Alberta. Out of the eighty some billion dollars that the province owes. But the interest rate will come up for renewal. It's currently in the low two percent range. It is expected it'll renew in the mid to high fours. And so that's a fairly healthy amount. So when the government is looking like they've got some surplus cash. They may actually want to be focusing on that so that we don't double our borrowing costs. We talked about other priorities being EMS and doctor recruitment. And just the the work on sending some letters out to introduce and and build awareness with. Members of the government and the opposition on kind of who the group is so that when they hear the name Naglo or Northeast Alberta Alliance for Growth and Opportunity, they know, oh. That is a forty strong municipalities that we better pay attention to. Very much like in the northwest of the province, there's one called Nail, and those guys have been doing it for years. And you know, when when they call, the government knows who they're. So those letters are coming out. And that's that's kind of the, you know, the summary of the of the meeting. We also talked about remuneration for hosting meetings, how that would work. Broadband a little bit and LGFF, the of course, there's still no announcements from the ministry on LGFF. Tim McPhee, Mayor McPhee spoke to Minister MacIver. And his comment was. Expect about what you got last year, but the challenge is we're trying to budget and we don't even know what 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 LGFF or MSI is going to look like, going to look like this year. We talked about being a source to present solutions, not a source for whining and crying. So if we've got a problem, we'll come with a solution as well, even if it's not maybe the solution they want, or they want to choose something different, but to not go in empty handed, but to come in and say. Here's a problem that we're facing as a region and here are two or three options to fix it. One of the things, the other thing that I had noted to talk to you about is, and I'm going to tell you about it now and we'll talk about it in budget probably more appropriately, but. It would be good to us to set up a. For me to have an understanding if if you're willing ever to host them here, that would bring those forty municipalities to our region. We are on the very far west of the the zone, but. They do move the meetings around, but I wouldn't commit to us bringing, you know, bringing them in because there is a cost for lunch that that comes from those guys. So that's something to talk about later, but I want to share it so we don't forget. Any questions about that meeting? See none. It would be in order to have a motion to accept the reports of committees from mention. Councillor Chamsik has moved. Then we accept the reports from committees for information. All is in favor. Opposed, the motion is adopted and the count is nine and zero. It is ten minutes before eleven. Ms. Blair is the delegation for eleven in the lobby. So why don't we? I had initially thought if we were fast, we would take a we jump into close and deal with a couple of those items, but I think. Is everybody just comfortable with a five minute break and then we'll come back and start five minutes early? So let's be let's get rolling again at five to eleven if we can. So let's be, let's get rolling again at five to eleven if we can. Opposed, the motion is adopted and the count is nine and zero. So why don't we? I had initially thought if we were fast, we would take a, we'd jump into clothes and deal with a couple of those items, but I think. Is everybody just comfortable with a five minute break and then we'll come back and start five minutes early? So let's be, let's get rolling again at five to eleven if we can. Councillor Holland, we're just, uh, the CAO was just, we're waiting for him to step back in.
That was good.
And then I'll be.
Awesome, thank you.
Four minutes after eleven. And I'd like to reconvene the Athabasca County Council meeting for the fourteenth of November, twenty twenty-three. We are at item number four point one on the agenda, and that is a delegation from the Plamondon and Wandering River Community Resource Society. We've got a number of folks with us today and I want to welcome you to our meeting. Thank you for coming. Our normal, uh. Program process is, uh, we'll have council introduce themselves to you. And then you'll have up to fifteen minutes for your presentation, you know. Don't feel obligated to use all of that, but if you need it. And then there may be some questions from council and we can talk and, um. And then. There's no decisions typically made at the same meeting, the, uh, the item does come up later in the agenda and usually it refers to another meeting for us to, to just spend some time thinking. So beginning, um, on my left is our CAO, Mr. Bob Beck. Uh, recording secretary, Ms. Blair, the communications coordinator, Mr. Schankelberg. And then we're going to start on the screen with councillor Holland, who is joining us via Zoom. And then, uh. The councilman's. Rob Minns, Division Eight. Welcome.
Kelly Chansick, Division Seven, Grassland, Crossfield, Atmore area.
Good morning, Camille Wallach, Division Nine, North of the River.
Sorry, I didn't introduce myself, but I'm Brian Hall, uh, elected in Division Four in the Reeve.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson, I reside in Division Three, which is the Caslin Boyle area.
Good morning, Natasha Kaptanic, Division Two, Collington, Minook and New Pine Creek.
Good morning, Joe Gerlock, Division One, Rochester Prairie, Valeria, in the deep south of the county.
And you know me, good morning, Gary Pramo, in the far northeast of the county, thank you for being here.
And now, uh, because we live stream and because of, uh, the record, the, uh, people hearing away, you have to hit the button in the middle of the microphone. To talk, it doesn't have to be that close, it has pretty good pickup, but in order to speak, please push the button and the floor is yours.
Um, hi, thank you for having us here today. Uh, my name is Pamela Nelson. Um, I'm a resident of the Wandering River Community. And, um, I am also a board member of the Plamondon Wandering River Community Resource Society. And we are here today to, um. Address, uh, an issue that has been brought to our attention and hope that we can actually. Uh, find a resolution within it, so.
I'm Andrea Uliak and I am the president for PWR CRS, Plamondon. Wandering River Community Resource Society.
And I'm Martin Iverson.
All right, well, thanks for having us here. Um. The reason we are here is that it has been recently brought to our attention, um, that Athabasca County is looking at. Um, striking funding towards small community programs. Um, PWR CRS is actually a small community program, um, which is actually a children's program that we operate. Within the Wandering River and Plamondon. Area. Uh. We're actually quite here to, um, address the concern that if these fundings are cut in small communities like ours. It makes it very hard for us to operate. Such programs, um. I know that some small communities feel. Um, it is hard, we are limited numbers, it is a area. These programs are a huge asset to our community. In, um, working with the wellbeing, the mental wellbeing and the wellbeing of not only the children in the community. But as well as the seniors that are located in our community. Um, if the funding is cut towards these operations, we have a hard time making a budget meet because these are nonprofit. Um, organizations. And that being said, we do a lot of our volunteering to fundraise and try and make all our budget meet so we can operate these programs. Um. Previously, you know, there has been some years that, uh. There has been a big change in that demographic in regards to the amount of children in our community to. Seniors and so forth using these programs. I, I have only been on our board for PWR CRS. For the last year, like this year actually happening, we had some changes go through and, um. Not only as a resident of the Wandering River Community, I am a mother of four children. To which my children use these programs and. Not only for my children's wellbeing, for my own wellbeing, this is our. Program that helps for the wellbeing of a mother who doesn't, we don't have childcare in our community, we don't have these. Other resources that we can go to, to have our people. Go and be like, oh, well, we can go here, we have to commute. For these programs if we don't have it in our community, um. It is very important that we do. Draw attention to where these funds and grants are being issued, um. Small communities, not just Wandering River, but Grasslands, Boyle, all these areas, we have these programs running, they may work. Once in a while, there may be days that there's no interest in them, but. As a generation moving forward and how to. Overall improve a community that there is potential for growth. In these areas, um, programs such as PWR CRS are needed and a huge asset. Um. The funding what covers in regards to that, if Athabasca County does allow funding to continue. And be used for these programs, it might not be a huge amount, but any little bit helps. In regards to the cost and the expense that it does have to operate such a program. We are volunteers that volunteer our time to have these programs operate. Um, being said, I just volunteered my whole weekend to help raise money so our program can keep operating. In that time, it does actually cost me money too, because I need somebody to watch my children in order to have. Time to put towards a program that we are trying to have run as a community whole. Um, our costs for our program is, um, because we are blended within two. Districts into community representations for one at the Baska County for Wandering River. Um, the other one is the Plamondon area, which is through Lacklubish County. Um, we are blended as one unit. Because we didn't have enough people to run two separate boards to have two separate programs. Uh, the funding, we do receive funding from Lacklubish County, as you can see in documentation that is provided. Um, in return, we just haven't seen much funding come across from Athabasca County in order to help us. Meet these things and, and when we're looking for that money, we're looking in regards to help with the electricity, the heating costs of a building. The building that we do operate in is actually an Athabasca County building, it is on Athabasca County land. Um. And seeing a little bit of these funds just helps give us that breathe room in order to function. And operate and run a proper program for our children now and our children moving forward. That is all I have to say right now, actually.
I feel that if we lose these programs, we will never receive them back. I was brought into this organization as the president. My children actually do not attend currently these programs, but I felt the need that I needed to step up in order to keep this program going. And I knew that if it went down the drain, we would not get this program back. Many of our parents and children. Um, really enjoy the program, really enjoy coming, doing crafts. Uh, socializing with their friends, having movie events, et cetera. And I knew that, uh, in order for us to keep this going, we need to be able to have funds coming in. That is the biggest thing. We have been fundraising a lot, um, that we just had a casino in Fort McMurray this past weekend. We are doing, um, Festival of Trees in Lacklubish, we are doing the concession for the Plamondon. Uh, Festo, Festival in Owell on December second, uh, previously we did some. Highway cleanup, we've done a Caligoo Meat fundraiser, Krispy Kreme fundraiser. So we know that we have to fundraise to keep this going, but we would also ask that if we could get some funds from Athabasca County, that would be a huge asset as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. I, I appreciate you being here to share and I'm sure council will have a couple of questions. I, I would maybe clarify because the comment was made that the county is moving to strike funding to small community programs and. And that, that on its own isn't actually accurate, uh, the. The county is not, uh, actively, council is not actively looking to cut funding to small community programs. Um, recently, one of the grant funding streams that we have operated for years. Was reviewed and, uh, that was the Community Hall Assistance Grant. And we just tested the, uh, organizations that were on the list to receive funding against whether they actually met the criteria of the funding stream. And there were a couple of holes that were added and, uh, one or two fell off the list as not meeting the, the, kind of the qualifications in terms of what they were doing. However, um. I think it's fair to say that the, the administration is reviewing grant policy and so that's one of the things that, um. You know, that particular grant might not make sense, but there could be other places in other ways. Um, so the, the, I had two questions because I have the floor, I'll start and then I'll, I'll move on to my colleagues, um. But I, I think it's great, you know, when you see community pull together to help the events and programs that make the community a good place to be. And, uh, and, and that, you know, you don't have kids there is, is, you know. It, it still says you care about the community and, and I think that's, uh. Happens in, in small town Alberta where we, we're part of boards that. Or do work for boards that we either our children are not yet on or have been on and have long gone, but we recognize the value of what's going on and so thanks for doing that. Do you, um. Offer similar programming then in Wandering River and Plamondon, like is it kind of run in parallel and, and then what are your hours, like how, what, what?
Um, so we do, we run a program that is parallel, um, to each other, uh. Plamondon is able to run a, um, five days a week. Um, we staff three employees for the Plamondon facility, uh, Wandering River operates. Three days a week, um, only from three to six in the afternoon during school season. Um, this year we were actually able to operate a full summer program in the Wandering River facility because there is a high interest. Um. As well as Plamondon, sorry, Plamondon operates a full program, um, for the summer program as well, but five days a week. From eight thirty in the morning till five thirty in the afternoon for Plamondon, as well as Wandering River for the summer program. Um, during school right now, like I said, we operate from three o'clock in the afternoon till six. Um, as well, Plamondon is the five days a week on those hours as well.
Thank you. Um, council, floor is open to questions. Councillor Walk.
Uh, thank you for coming today. I see you guys have a, a grant with the FCSS in Lacklubish County. What is your affiliation with the FCSS here?
Uh, we have reached out, um, with them, we have been in contact with FCSS, um, we have not. I have not gotten any information back in regards to that, um. I know in the few times I know FCSS has now just, um. Started to come to our school once a month, like one Friday a month, and that is all we've seen in regards to the. The setback and the FCSS from Athabasca County, um, we have not received any funding or anything towards the help operating the children's program at this point.
Floor is yours.
Yeah, I just, I've seen FCSS posting that they're doing stuff in Wandering River now, but they've been canceled because there's been no interest. So, um, I don't know if there's maybe a miscommunication between the two.
There is a miscommunication, I think that, um. The people that have seen, because it's only been the second session that FCSS has come forward to Athabas, uh, sorry, Wandering River. Um, but I believe that people are, don't understand that they have to register every time to attend. And I think that was the delay on the second, uh, session that had happened, the memos had come out. Um, but people didn't realize that they do have to actually register or it doesn't happen. Um, because I know that there was a lot of interest and then the day it was to happen that it was just, they canceled it because there was. No confirmation on that.
Takeaway is maybe a little better communication through.
Yep, I guess, do you think that's a duplication of efforts with what they're doing versus what you're doing?
No, because. FCSS is coming up, they're running a TOTS program. Um, PWR CRS runs a kids program from ages whoever is qualified in preschool system to the ages of twelve. Correct, and, um. So we don't actually offer a TOTS program, even though there is interest of it, we cannot. Um. Honestly afford to operate a full day program where we have drop in of mom and tots. Um, at a certain point to then operate a full program in the evening. So we've had to make a choice to which one is more beneficial at that point. There is a number of TOTS that aren't even enrolled in the school system at this point yet, so that is where FCSS has stepped up and has opened the doors to allow us to start something there.
Councillor Crummell, floor is yours.
Thank you, you, you mentioned the different times and dates for different locations. And having some of this information, I'm trying to paint a picture here for my colleagues that might not know it all. Um, what do you charge per family per each location? Is there a charge? How is that incorporated back into what you do?
Um, so this year we've had to implement a fee in order to children to attend the program, if not, we would not be able to operate. Because we would not be able to meet a budget, um, a daily fee is ten dollars, um, per child. For two children, anything over two children, if we were attend, it's a half price. So that is for after school program, um, our summer program we operated, it was twenty-five dollars per child. For the day from eight thirty till five thirty or six, um, again, anything over two children, it was then half price.
The floor is, floor is yours.
So follow up, that's the same for both facilities then, and. Uh, when you're talking about childcare for the day and after school, are your people accredited? Uh, as childcare providers in both facilities?
Yes, uh, both of our. Employees at Plamondon and Wandering River have a minimum of level two, we do have. We do have a level three in wandering River as well. We have a level three in Plamondon. Our level three in Plamondon is a casual employee. And we actually are looking at also getting licensing um in place in Plamondon. To help out those families that need it for subsidy reasons. So that is why we are looking at getting the licensing in Plamondon. Um, we do, like, there is um always quite a few children that would like to come, that need to come. Unfortunately, um, some parents are not able to afford it. So that is why we are looking at trying to get the licensing. Unfortunately, it is a little bit of a wait to get licensing now due to the backlog, but it is in the process. And we just uh with the pricing, we felt that charging ten dollars a child for um three hours potentially. Um, and we are flexible if parents aren't able to be there by five thirty. We're able to stay open a little longer for parents, like depending how it works with parents, we are flexible and uh on that. In Plamondon and in wandering River as well as in the summer. Um, some parents were needing to drop off at eight A M, so we were making it very flexible for them. Uh, being make as long as our workers were able to accommodate as well, of course. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. We all know the value of your program and what you do and definitely appreciate it on behalf of the communities. So thank you very much for your time.
Counselor Minz.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Um, sounds like to me like like this is kind of like an after school. Uh, care program, right? It's it's uh. And and in the summer, like like after school care, I know my my grandkids are involved in that too, where after school like. Go there until their parents get off work and then they go and pick them up and bring them back. So have you. And that's run through the daycare society here in here in Athabasca. Have you reached out to them? With any information regarding that or?
Yes, I have reached out to Boyle and Lacklubish, asking if they would take us under their umbrella. Unfortunately, neither of them were willing to do that at this time. It is a big commitment for them as well and a a large cost as well. So um unfortunately, neither of the daycares were willing to do that for us.
Um, sorry, I'll speak in here if I can for a moment. Um. We have veered that it is partial childcare as well as. Um, before it was labeled as a full and drop in center. But because we have now have to implement a fee to operate a program, we cannot be labeled as a drop in center. Um. I myself, um, speaking on my end as a parent. I use the program as an activity for my children. I do not need the program as childcare. But I am willing to put the fees out there so my children have something to do in a community where there is absolutely nothing else to do. Um. Unfortunately, like you say, if we could actually develop our program even more. We can have it operating that our sports and everything can be brought back into this community instead of us um traveling. I I do a lot of traveling coming here to Athabasca myself for having my kids participate in activities. That are um cost effective that come into this community as well as traveling to Lacklubish. Um, so having this kids program is just another source outside of the school system. That these kids are able to go and play and associate with their friends in the community after a day of school.
Counselor Anderson, Counselor Minz, did you, Counselor Anderson then Chumsik.
Do you have statistics for utilization of each the wandering River and Plamondon centers?
Uh, we do, I can provide that at a further point. I did not bring that with me today, but we do have uh. Numbers that can show that how the facility is being used.
Counselor Chamsik, the floor is yours.
I was just wondering like with some of the programming, because this is more of a program based um. Program. Um, out of curiosity, like you're adding up in wandering River. Um, Plamondon, there is extracurricular soccer club, so on, so forth. Are you guys still all coming back to grassland when we do run?
Uh, Plamondon being a larger community does have some some assets like that um that they do have.
We have baseball.
Only baseball.
As for wandering River, there is no such program as that. There is no baseball, there's no soccer, there is no hockey. There is nothing.
Boys and girls club.
Nothing.
If we want to put any of our kids in any sports or anything after school. We either have to go to Lacklubish or Athabasca. We did have our kids in soccer for a little bit, but then. They coincide with some of the like the basketball season that's that bowl is putting on and and stuff like that. So it's. It's a toss up of what we our kids want to go into and what we're going to do. The reason that this program is needed so bad in Wander River. Is there's kids there that just want to do stuff. The the kids want to play, they want to see each other. They they go to school, they do their things at school. Yes, they're it's not even the same kids that are same friends in school when they get to that playgroup.
We would also like.
Videos it, myself and my wife use it. My wife is a teacher, she's a principal in Wander River School. She sees her kids twenty four seven. So when it's time to have a break. Our kids go and it's it's helps my kids, it helps my wife. Because you can't be with them twenty four seven. They 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 do need to have other people in the community of it. And that's the problem, we lose this. And if the writing is on the wall, me and Pam were talking about it today, it's like, we're counting pennies to know how we're going to get through the end of the year till. We our next fund that we just worked our butts off to go and get a a community together to go and put a casino together. And we're sitting here trying to figure out, it's like, okay, we're gonna throw some money in here for to keep it running before it dies and we're sitting at that right now. So that's why we're here today is to try to convince you guys that this is a new program. I understand that there's a lot of conflict that people are talking because Plamondon and Wander River, Plamondon, Wander River, we have two different counties there. Yes, the problem that we have is our county of Athabasca is very slim on what we can get out of them to help us. Lacklubish, their youth society is in the arena in Plamondon. It is a lacklubish building, lacklubish rent free, water sewer, power, the whole nine yards is paid.
Telephone.
Telephone is all paid by the Lacklubish County. That's why you're even asked for delegation of where this money is going. If it wasn't for Lacklubish County right now, we wouldn't be. That that's that's how much money that we've been relying on the Lacklubish side to help us with. And that's why we come to you guys to say, we we don't expect hands and fistful of money, we just expect some help.
Yep, we we I think we hear that you definitely need to go. Um, final question to Counselor Chamsik or follow up and then.
No, I I just want to say, you know, I commend you guys for coming out with the advocacy, you know, um. Many of our lining areas face the same um issues with uh finding program and. You know, and I appreciate that you guys come out and uh do the good work with your volunteer efforts as well.
We want to keep this program running to keep the kids off the street, to keep the kids from doing bad stuff. And to have a source for them to come and do crafts and. See their friends and not be on the streets causing trouble. And that is our biggest um mission with this organization.
So I'm gonna um give the Florida Counselor Gerlock just kind of watching the clock, but also and then when he's. Got a question, I wanted to just follow up and kind of conclude with, do you have a specific ask? But we'll. Look, Counselor Gerlock, go first.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there's three quick questions. You you're offering the program three days a week. What happens on the other two days?
Um, we operate Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Uh, Mondays and Fridays, we do not. Because if you follow the school calendar, um, a lot of those days are holidays throughout. Um, and we find that that time people are doing their own family stuff and. Oh, yeah, we do operate on like days that um extra days if we have to, right? So like on an off school Friday that we do operate sometime the full day program. But if it's at like a stat holiday, so forth. Like I said, a lot are reflected back that that's their family time because all the parents are home. All the parents are then doing their own stuff, but if it's a actual just um, how would you say a P A day?
P D day.
So if it's a P D day where the teachers are stuck in school still and. People are working, it's not a holiday, we do offer it. If we have a sign up and there's enough people to sign up, like further children would be there. Then we weren't having it open all day. If one person needs the childcare for the day, it's like. How do we do it? Like, we can't even afford to open the doors for that. So that's. We have to have a sign up on that day and and it's we put we posted on our Facebook saying that. We have a a possibility of this day opening, is anybody wanting to go? And we're actually, we're probably fifty fifty on when it is. It depends on what's when it falls and and what's going on in the area that. Whether the kids get centered on.
Reason I asked is it's five days in Plamondon and three days. And the second question uh was uh. Is there any other use of this facility other than uh like are you sharing use of the facility with anyone else?
No, um, for wandering River, no, it is completely operated as a a kids program. And uh Plamondon, yes, correct.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
They do use the facility twice a year in Plamondon for a hockey event. So one weekend in November, uh. We can't use it on a Friday and one weekend in March, we're not able to use it on a Friday. But otherwise, it is solely for the boys and girls club.
And the last question is, what is the actual funding that you're receiving from the county now?
At this point, um, nothing, no, no.
From Athabasca County.
Yeah.
So currently, we are not receiving anything from Athabasca County. We have just uh recently applied for another twenty thousand from Lacklubish County. Previous years, it has been fifteen thousand from Lacklubish County and they just up that to twenty thousand this year. Um, and we should receive our funding from that in mid-December, we're hoping mid-December. It'll be for the twenty twenty four year is what we would get the funding for.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. So um, do you have a specific ask that you were hoping like we need X or is it to? Can you look at how the policies apply and what might be available to us to keep the program going?
Um, as a specific, we don't have like an exact amount. Um, it would be nice to see that we could have that building functioning and operating. Um. It is an Athabasca County building. Um, it would be nice that if they were covering the water cost of the pro- the facility, the electricity. Um, maintenance of the building as of right now, there could be um. Health standard regulations that we need maintenance done, like our flooring. Uh, um, is a hazard in that building and yet we can't fix it because we don't have the funding to be able to put out. That amount of money to fix the flooring in this building. Um. Minimal things like that. So like our heating, our water, the electricity, that would be the ideal aspect. That would save us a lot of money to op- to be able to operate this program.
Thank you.
We also pay a large amount to insurance uh in wandering River because it is. Stated as a building that we need to fully ensure. So our insurance is quite high in uh wandering River. Compared to Plamondon only because we're not having to pay those insurance premiums in Plamondon.
Okay, so I think um the recommendation uh that will come back to council later in the meeting is that we. Refer this to the um grant, the grant discussion that's coming up. Um, in the in between time, and I I apologize for not having gone and read this last night to make sure I had it top of mind, but. There is a policy called Grants to Groups that's relatively new, that there may be some, there may be some uh. Areas in there that that would fit in terms of just the the existing grant funding that we we allocate.
I will definitely look at your grants this evening as soon as I'm home. Thank you for that.
Okay, so tha- thank you for coming down. Um, you know, it's hard, we can't all live everywhere and and it's a. An excellent opportunity to for us to find out a little bit more about the great things that are occurring in your community. Um, and uh and the work you do and the need and and uh. So appreciate you making the time. I know being here in the middle of the day uh is is not always convenient, but I'm glad you came down to talk to us. So thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Chair, just follow up, you you are going to provide numbers for each facility, I believe, that will be forthcoming.
They've got that.
Okay, thank you.
So we will um take two minutes, counsel, while we switch delegations, because the next delegation is almost certainly waiting and will. So don't go far. You didn't have a question, I was hoping, so I I'm sorry I didn't come to you. Um, you want to ask the, you had outlined some for the next delegation, do you want to? Do you want to speak to those or do you want someone else to do it?
To be honest with you, my voice is really gone, um throat's very sore, so if you wouldn't mind, I would appreciate it.
It, we will do that, yep. And if if you want to like catch my attention, put that little hand thing up and I'll try to watch for that too. Or potentially, you can send the chat to um whoever answers to chat at the other end of the Zoom.
Appreciate that, thanks.
You work with the presentation? Okay, it is, uh. Thirty-eight minutes after eleven, want to reconvene the council meeting of November fourteenth. We have a delegation from Aspen View Public Schools. And want to welcome you to our meeting today. Uh, at our council, a normal course of action is, uh, we'll take a moment, introduce the, the people in the room, and then when it comes to. Uh, to you, the floor becomes yours and and you can go on with the presentation and then. Then we'll talk afterward. We normally have some time constraints, but I think, um. You know, that's kind of less of a concern for councils, my understanding today. So beginning on my left, uh, we have our C O, Mr. Bob Beck, I think you've all met. Recording Secretary Ms. Blair, Communications Coordinator, Mr. Schenkelberg. On Zoom, who you can see the very tiny square is Counselor Holland. Um, and, uh, Councilman Minz, the floor is yours. Uh, Rob Minz, Division Eight, uh, Baptiste Lake Island.
Hello, everyone, uh, Division Seven, Kelly Chamsak, Grassland, Atmore. Areas.
Good morning, Camille Wallach, Division Nine, North of the River.
Morning Ashton Anderson, I reside in Division Three, which is Caslin Boyle area.
Good morning Natasha Capitania, Division Two, Collington, Menooka, and New Pine Creek.
Good morning, uh, Joe Gerlock, uh, elected in Division One, gateway to the county of Athabasca.
And good morning Gary Cromwell, the Far Northeast, Wandering River, Braynap, Blue Jay area. So I have partial you and partial northern lights, and so. Most beautiful area of the county up there.
And because of the, uh, Counselor Holland being away in the live stream, of course, we use the microphones just so that everybody can hear. Counselor Cromwell, is that one that's, uh, empty there? Are you able to kind of set that near? Our, the Vice Chair? Okay. The floor is yours. Thank you. Welcome and glad you're here.
Great. Well, thank you for having us. Uh, it's been a while since Aspen View has. Been able to meet with the county and we sure appreciate being, uh, accepted as a delegation today. My name is Candy Nakapilo, I am the current Board Chair. I, my ward is the Boyle Grassland Ward, so it kind of, uh, comprises. Mrs. Chamsak's area, um, I will let everybody else do their own. Introductions, go ahead.
Uh, my name is Annie Kersmarchik, I'm one of the, uh, trustees for the Athabasca area and, um, your current Vice Chair.
And I'm Dennis McNeil, I'm, uh, also a trustee for Aspen View North Central, and, uh, it's great to see you all this morning.
Uh, my name is Constantine Castrinos, I'm the new Superintendent of Schools.
And my apologies, Ms. Anderson, I also represent your board as well, so. Thank you for having us. So I understand that you each have your package in your. Uh, agenda today, but we are going to go through the slide a little bit and we will start. With Mr. Castrinos just introducing what, uh, we would like to present today.
Is it okay if I stand like? I just, yeah, I ju, I just feel like it would be a bit more natural for me to.
Absolutely, and we'll hope, we'll hope that everybody can hear, maybe if the C O.
Use my teacher voice, I'm, I'm sure that people will be able to hear me.
C O. Pop your mic on too, there we go.
Excellent, thank you so much. Uh, thank you again for this opportunity. It's really great to be with you today. Um, the reason we wanted to come and. And join you and talk to you is because the, the topic. Of, of partnerships and municipal partnerships tremendously important to the success of students. But also to greater municipalities and we think that having that, um. That ability to work together and that ability to find opportunities and inroads to work together, see how it is that. Each of our work influences the others, um, I think is an opportunity we have to take. And one that we have to embrace. So I know that I'm new, so forgive me, uh, if I make missteps that way, I'm only a couple of months into my position. But at the same time, I'm quickly realizing by spending time in many different schools and and really in all parts of your. Uh, influencing communities, um, that I'm realizing of the importance. Of, of rural education about schools. In, in our, in our smallest of towns and smallest of hamlets and villages and how important they are. So we'll speak to a little bit today and what I wanted to do was provide some information on behalf of the board. What it, what is it that we do in certain schools? How is it that we support students? And what are some of those opportunities that inroads? So. A little bit about, uh, our board, this is a, a more full picture of everyone that could be here today.
Okay, good ignore that, he's just gonna adjust the camera.
Uh, one of, one of the main things though, and one of the, the biggest pieces for us is about ensuring, uh, rural sustainability. Of schools and really that's a universal theme. I'm sure it's something that as council you address all the time in different ways, whether it's. Uh, concerning housing, whether it's concerning business and business development, any of those pieces, for us, it's specific to schools. Sorry. Right, that's all right. Get out of my presentation. All right, so, uh. So, again. Education for truth and reconciliation, uh, high school success, literacy and numeracy, these are the main. Uh, folk I, if you will, of our, of our school division and of our board, um, trying to give students and giving students. Uh, the greatest of opportunities to engage in all of these pieces in every school regardless of where they are. Are you cooking or am I? You're good. Okay, good, thank you. So, a, a little bit of an overview and we'll start right here, uh, in Athabasca with, uh. Uh, Whispering Hills. Um, you might not be able to see that because of the pop-ups, okay, but you do have it in your packages in terms of enrollment and staff. One thing I did want to point out here and what I will point out on every slide, uh, is the ratio between teachers and support staff. That is really an important piece because when it comes to, uh, supporting students. That we want to make sure that we provide wraparound service for all students and that's critically important. Not every child, as you know, is, uh, enters school in the same way. Not every child enters school with the same level, if you will, of care in some cases, or the same level of exposure to. Early literacy or early numeracy. So we do, uh, our best, provide as much support as we can. I've never seen this and I've been part of three different school divisions, one that is, uh, one of the largest in the province. And another one that's a more comparable size to Aspen View, but this, uh, you know, the idea of support staff in many cases outnumbering teaching staff. So there is no complaint there around the ideas of, you know, teachers just don't have enough support. To, to help and provide those extra pieces to our students, as we do. Uh, and, and one piece that we do, um, that I noticed right away in terms of part partnering with the counties around. F C S S, the F C S S partnership and the supports that are provided for mental health and safety. Of kids within our school and for family supports, um, that, that is, uh, an invaluable partnership and it's something that. You know, we look to and that we do lean on and work with within our schools. It opens the door for many other conversations as you see up here, things like having, uh, grab and go breakfasts. For kids and being able to lean on other grants to support kids around nutrition for instance. So. You're gonna see a theme and the theme in the slides. Is that we do. Much of this. At all of our schools. And I think that that ability to create a consistency and and a model of consistency regardless of where we are. Regardless of the school, and that's a goal, right? Um. Moving into Edwin Par, of course, Edwin Par, uh, school is our largest. There's seven hundred and forty-nine students there, uh, this year. Um, and thirty-nine teachers, eighteen support staff in this case. As students move into high school and secondary school, I'm a secondary, uh, educator, um, that I. Started by teaching high school English. So as kids move into junior high and high school and especially high school, the curriculum is put together differently. It's much more streamed as to, uh, students, uh, successes and and kind of almost like prior prerequisites. Whereas as you saw with Whispering Hills, when kids come into elementary. Um, they're all in the same classroom and and as educators are really trying to figure out where all the students are, provide supports, provide supports, right? Wraparound. So, but again, when it comes to F C S S and the partnership around mental health, but when it comes to certain programming. Whether it's like, you know, construction, whether it's like the extracurricular pieces, um, kids get a full array of that or D P C.
Sorry, Constantine, just to confirm, F C S S does serve all of our county schools?
Absolutely, yeah.
Just to confirm.
Yeah. And so, um, the other here we have, uh, the Center for Alternative Education, um, the acronym is, uh, is the E. This is for students who in many cases, um, and and this is a very common thing, may not fit into the everyday. Uh, rigor of what school looks like. They would like a delivery model that's somewhat different, they'd like to work at their own pace. They would like to, uh, maybe they have a familial obligations or working obligations that's making it more difficult for them. Or other challenges and sometimes it could be around mental health, it could be around other things, so. They, they require a different approach and so our principal Sean Morrison there would support our students. Who are looking to enroll in that, in that type of program. Okay. Uh, where are we here? Sorry, this.
Boyle.
Yeah, it is. Uh, so. We have a, about two hundred and forty-four students in Boyle School, K to twelve, plus a Great Beginnings program. For those of you that don't know, Great Beginnings. Is just exactly that, it's targeted toward kids who are about three years of age, uh, three and four years of age, and it just looks to provide a start for those students. Uh, around literacy, numeracy, socialization and social skills. And just kind of getting them ready for those first days of kindergarten, um, and and schooling. If it is at age six. But again, F C S S partnership, provincial nutrition grants and support, morning snacks program. You know, there's so much research out there that suggests that if students come to school and they're hungry. Or if students are coming to school and they don't have a lunch or they don't have access to proper nutrition, uh, learning is. Is not a fundamental. Hierarchical need like in Bloom's taxonomy, right? Like if you're not getting food and you're not getting shelter, then how are you supposed to learn? So. Again, those partnerships, those grants we're accessing are going to do just that and in our school. Uh, Grassland, right now. Okay, so Grassland, we have an enrollment of about fifty students. Uh, six teachers, five support staff, again, the F C S S pieces there, the provincial nutrition grads, the snack program pieces. Something you'll notice about, uh, Grassland, here in the top left, there's some construction, it looks like it's happening. Beautiful, uh, outdoor learning space and this is something that we're seeing more and more of in school divisions around the province. I had a chance. I've seen it a few times now, but when I was at the meet the teacher, uh. Night, this was my first opportunity, great barbecue that Principal Earl had there, I had a double cheeseburger that night, uh. We had, I had a chance to have a look at this space. And how great it is because you know what? Um, I remember even as an English teacher, taking students outside to, to learn some Romeo and Juliet, some Shakespeare and give them a, a different perspective, sometimes getting them into nature. Getting them outside of the, the, you know, the desks and rows and the traditional kind of, you know, classroom, it's great. And and it helps to inspire and access kids and the way that their brains function in a, in a different way. So really great and it was great to see the community come together and provide not only labor around that, but, uh, supplies and and other pieces. And it's a space that that community and school community will, will use.
I just wanted to add, Constantine, so every one of our schools has a fundraising organization that supports the school. To fundraise for those things that are not, uh, funded through Alberta education. So. Um. Kelly there, I guess, is representing her fundraising group, which, which built a greenhouse, which built the outdoor classroom, so but. To be clear, every one of our schools has amazing fundraising groups. Um, most of them have casinos, I believe, I think all of them do have a casino and as well do other fundraising efforts and from playgrounds to. All that extra stuff that the, the school that we aren't taking out of the classroom to try to provide for the schools are, are. All of our communities are full of. Extremely, uh, excellent volunteers.
Yeah, and just to point, uh, your attention here in the bottom left of the screen, where you see the T P, it's, it's a little bit obscured, but in your presentation, it's not. You know, we, we engaged Elder Philip Campu, uh, starting a couple of years back to work with all of our schools and. And to, uh, help all of our schools build their own. T Ps and so everything from like the wood and the lodgings to picking the proper cover and. And thinking about what to put on those covers and so on, um, it again fits directly into the T Q S and the curricular outcomes around. Indigenous education and how it is that we're making, um, you know, the teachings of indigenous education, natural pieces of the curriculum and how we deliver curriculum in schools, so. It's just another opportunity, another learning space for students, right? Because of this learning, yeah, in a different way, but, but, you know, a very valid way, so. That's an example there of that. Um, Rochester, so Rochester School, we have thirty-eight students, K, K to nine, four teachers, four support staff, again, F C S S support, we have. Uh, breakfast and lunch programs that are, uh, supported there as well, and Rochester is our smallest school. Um, a five-year enrollment trend for Aspen View as a whole. We'll see that, you know, in twenty twenty-one and this would have been on the back end of our, our time in COVID and and those lockdowns. Where we had our lowest number of twenty-four ninety-one and from which we've recovered to twenty-six twenty-five. Okay? And, uh, looking at Athabasca, over a ten-year, Athabasca proper over a ten-year trend. Uh, we can see again, twenty twenty-one, we had that kind of like little point of view, but now we've recovered up to thirteen thirty, we're headed up in that direction again. Uh, Boyle, I've broken them down for you, the ten-year trend. Um. Is that we're at two forty-four now off of the low of two nineteen back in twenty seventeen? And then Grassland and Rochester, which are the two smallest that we have here as, as part of Athabasca County. Uh, we're fifty and thirty-eight respectively, and this is a ten-year trend that. Pretty cool, any comments you'd like to make or any? Rusty McNeil or Marsha? Okay. So how can we help each other and and what is that we could do in terms of municipal partnerships and working together? Um. So I, I'm new to the community, full disclosure, one of the biggest challenges that I had was finding a, a place to rent initially. That was a big challenge for me, um, and that, that's something that, um. Took quite some time. Um, and then also comparatively in terms of, um, you know, that attracting families. Retaining, retaining and attracting staff, that's always a, a concern for us. We have openings in schools, for instance, at Edwin Par. Which is our, our largest, if you will, school, um, and has, um. You know, so many different programs that say, but it's difficult to attract. Teachers, um, one, one of the, one of the big issues around it has to do with affordable and viable housing. And, um, and so that's, that's one thing I know it's also, uh, a greater concern as it extends and sometimes into the healthcare community and attracting a doctor. Or, or nurses or other individuals, uh, professionals who might want to come to the community and call us home. So, um. Together, I mean, that's, that's something that we can have conversations about and how completely support each other around that.
I just wanted to talk about the, the unfilled teacher positions.
Sure.
So as Constantine alluded to, we do, even in the larger town of Athabasca, our. Since the beginning of the year, we have some unfilled teaching positions, which has become quite a challenge in our schools. To have to fill in these positions, so then you are obviously taking away from other classes because. We have teachers that are filling multiple roles and multiple hats. So I think Aspen View, just to show what we, I guess we are trying to do. We have been attending job fairs in, uh, the after Christmas February-ish.
Yeah, we started.
Colleges and universities.
Kings, Concordia, Graham and Hume, the University of Alberta, some other things that we're doing right now that are unique and. Not really common, uh, is, uh, we're incentivizing some of these job opportunities. Uh, outside of the collective agreement contracts and start dates and offering for families, things like. You know, a moving allowance, if you're, if you're willing to come to Athabasca, like here's a small moving allowance for you or small signing, I mean, it says a way to create. You know, because there's so much competition out there for work right now and, uh, you know, job postings, um. Are plentiful and and people are able to kind of pick and choose a little bit, especially around teaching. Because over the last few years, it's no secret over the last few years since COVID, we've seen a decline. In people in the teaching profession in terms of giving up. Full-time continuous teaching contracts and walking away from these careers to do something else. And that's not necessarily being filled, like it's not being, you know, we're not seeing, um, uh, a, a new population that's larger coming in of teaching professionals to say, we're going to snap up. And it's really the most evident in rural communities because it's, it gets more and more difficult to get. Uh, young graduates to come to rural communities, so that's one thing that, you know, we hope we can work together with.
And this is not a problem, that's just specific to rural Alberta, it's, it's right across the province right now. And so the Public School Boards Association, for example, is advocating very strongly for, uh, more teachers to go into the. And so the Public School Boards Association, for example, is advocating very strongly for uh more teachers to go into the. More people to go into the teaching profession, but to incentivize that so that um there's some sort of a break for kids. Some sort of an incentive for them to go into the education field and whether that be, you know, some sort of a grant or forgiveness of loans or whatever. But it's not just teachers, it's it's occupational therapists, speech language pathologists, uh psychologists, counselors. All of those are needed in our schools and it's provincial, it's a provincial issue that needs to be addressed. And so every time we have a a meeting with the minister, we talk about those those issues as well as the cross ministry piece, the wraparound piece. The um the collaboration between mental health, health, children's services and education. The Ministry of a Child, for example, would be one of the things that we'd be strongly provoked promoting and and pushing for. Um so those, it's 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 not just rural Alberta, it's all of Alberta, so it's competing with with the the rest of the the boards across the province. For educators.
So that's the key point. And here's where I'll just use some of my previous experience to flesh this out a little bit. So I was previously employed with Edmonton Public School Board, so the Edmonton Public School Board never had an issue with attracting. New teachers, because every graduate that came out of, let's say, the University of Alberta or gap Graham and Q and or Concordia, that's where they would send. Probably their first application, but they received so many. That even their ability to get through them and then move people just onto a sub list, let's say, or whatever, it would take a very long time. They're all about to happen, so when new graduates who really are passionate about their education and wanting to get into their career would say like. Well, you know, I'll go to Athabasca because Athabasca is an hour and thirty five minutes from Edmonton, my family's nearby. It seems like, you know, it's got a great river front, let's celebrate now, it's a beautiful place, right, lots to do. That's not happening now because Edmonton Public is seeing a pullback in how many people are applying. And so now they're getting deeper into those lists, deeper and deeper, not as many people are getting onto a sub list. Cause they need him in temporary or in full-time positions or probationary positions right away. Uh and or they need their sublists have been decimated by retirements and and other things. Cause that the age grouping of teachers, believe it or not, is top-heavy from fifty uh and even fifty-five in many cases and higher. So you and so there hasn't been that that backfill. It's happening at Edmonton Public, but it's not trickling out like it used to, let's say, to rural communities.
I just wanted to say, when when Aspen View does go out to these job fairs, I believe it's a couple of teachers.
Yeah.
Maybe one administrator and a teacher that would normally go to the job fair and they set up a table, a booth. And it's all about promoting our region, uh our communities, um so they bring uh. Lots of literature based on what our communities have to offer, we're selling the entire region, not just our school division, so. Um I think that's a really important piece. Another thing I wanted to point out after Dennis spoke, I'm not sure if all of council knows. But Dennis eh, when he talks about meeting with ministers and such, Dennis is our uh president. Of our Public School Boards Association of Alberta, so we are very fortunate that he holds that very key position. And he is our trustee on our board, we are no doubt benefited by his leadership in that role. So thank you so much, Dennis, for serving that, but I just wanted, in case you guys didn't know that, he is in that.
So.
Excellent position.
The topic of like co-advocacy, how we can both work together to advocate for the things that matter. I think is a is a really important topic, you know, how can we work together to advocate to provincial government and to other levels of government that, hey? This isn't just about the county or it's not just about the school division, it's about strengthening the entire community by doing both. And I think that that's an opportunity for us going forward to work together and how we could. Um you know, you should stand shoulder to shoulder around some advocacy to provincial government, let's say.
So, oh, sorry, I just wanted to say, we recently participated in a meeting with RMA and ABUNI as well. Um and just talking with them and promoting um the collaborations as we are a stakeholder with them. And collaborating going forward for any movements or ideas, um just to ensure that that, you know, they talked to Alberta School Boards Association. And the Public School Boards Association, because your community members are our students, our students are your community members. So it's only in our best interest to work together, so just going forward, you know, um it's us looking after each other.
So recently, two weeks ago, we were able to have a private meeting with our new education minister, establish our relationship with him. Express our concerns about uh rural Alberta and how we are faced with um. A number of issues and the topic of real rural sustainability is very important to us. And uh it was a good dialogue that we had with him, so establishing that relationship is very, very important with a new minister.
Yeah, and I I think one of the and one of the biggest pieces for us, and it's been alluded to, is if we have people. Were interested in becoming teachers and and stepping into these positions, what does that look like? What does that process look like? Right now, it's a very long process, it's not quick. Even if you get teachers coming from other countries as new immigrants to Canada who want to settle into like, and they have. You know, uh degrees and they have how long it takes to have those things um uh reprocessed, if you will, by Alberta standards. Takes quite a long time and our minister sounds dedicated to trying to find ways, not just for education, but also for healthcare. Which is another area and also for the trades, which is a big focus in business to say, hey, you know what? Maybe it shouldn't take two years for someone to bridge from a trades program to an education program. Maybe we could rework what that looks like and and provide that service in the schools, cause you know what? Having a welding teacher is a really big deal, it's amazing, because then how do we inspire the youth of tomorrow to get into trades like that? Usually they look at mentors within their schools to do that, right? And and that's in many ways their first exposure to that kind of a profession, so. That kind of brings us to the end of of uh presentation.
Thank you for sharing all of that and I think, uh you know, as you've said, the. The ability to work together on common concerns is important if we if we approach the province of the United Voice, we're obviously going to get a lot farther. And we see that in the region where, you know, our council has done a lot of work with our neighboring municipalities, both inside the boundaries and and adjacent. Your um, so I think council has probably a few questions they want to, you know, bring up, but I I had uh just looking as through your presentation. Your student student to teacher ratios look like they would be the envy of most divisions, like there's not one over twenty and. Um lots of them below below fifteen, so it looks like you're you're covered on that front, but. Um so that looks really good. Yesterday, had the chance to drive by the H A Costas School, which uh certainly um deserves compliments on on the beauty of the building. It's um, you know, very different in style and design than Edwin Par. And and I know there's a habit for, you know, boards and councils and everybody to want to put their stamp on it with their own brilliant architecture and hire somebody new. But do you think that we're well-served as a as a province by this approach across schools? Where there everyone is unique to its face versus kind of the the more uh law heat era approach. Where hospitals, for example, there was one or two designs that worked for everybody that were repeatable, budgetable. You could work out the kinks.
Cause we. And if I may jump in on that, Brian, you're absolutely right. Uh I think H A Costas is probably the last school that we're going to see where we're going to have that kind of input into building schools. Uh I think the 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 writing on the wall is is there, I think the 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 ministry is very much looking at a cookie. Cookie cutter approach to schools, if it's three hundred kids, I'm going to open this drawer, this is the school that you're going to get. We were very fortunate to have that kind of input, both in EPC and HAK, and I think that's a real tribute to the 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 leadership and. At the time, uh. Not that no reflection on you, Constantine, because you weren't you weren't here for that, but I think that's what we're going to see. I, one of the major things is um like right now across the province, uh we're seeing a huge influx of numbers. Not in it, not so much in the rural Alberta, but especially in Calgary and Edmonton. Um and so when when the announcement for, and what two years ago, what the what Adriana La Grange announced seventeen brand-new schools. Across the province, Calgary could have used all seventeen of those schools. Unfortunately, not all seventeen of those schools were public schools. They were they were considered public charter schools, public Catholic schools and public Francophone schools. Only public schools have to to educate and accept and provide programming for every single student that comes through their door. We've seen across this province where a family of five, three kids would be attending a Catholic school and to a public school. Because the Catholic school cannot provide programming for those kids, how is that public? So that's that's the battle that we fight, so.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I just want to say, because I have some experience with this, like during my time at Edmonton Public, uh when I was in their planning and programs and infrastructure department. Um we we had to um put together and go through this process of engagement. For about thirteen schools over two years that were new at that time that opened. And uh what I can say is that was um the last, they kind of moved away after that to the more of like the independent styling of schools. But that was on the older P three model, if we remember, where it would be uh a combination or a partnership with with a business initiative. Or uh the government, it would be a joint um a joint project and they were very much as you described. Um, Mr. Hall, the the idea of um if you're looking for a K to nine eleven hundred student model, this is what it would look like. If you needed portables in the future, this is where they would go and it was very much um a standardized way of approaching. Uh and they would have starter schools like K to three schools, they would have K to six schools, no, actually, they did not offer K to six schools, they offered K to three schools. And then K to nines and then also nine through twelve, so those were the models.
And I mean, for me, the question comes up partly because our council has spent a lot of time talking about lifecycle planning and asset management and and how we can, you know, there's a. Coming back from RMA, there's clearly a very deep need across the province for infrastructure investments and finding the ways to be efficient is important. Um I'm gonna um offer colleagues questions, Mr. Gerwick.
Yeah, with FCSS, I forget what they call the program, but they have mentors, the two mentors to go in and work with students. And they're filled right up, there is a need for more. And especially when we discussed, there's a need, there there are two females in there right now and there's a need for a male. You know, to to kind of offset that and and I'm I'm kind of pushing here, I I think the county should. Maybe pony up a little bit and and help with uh with maybe some extra dollars to to try and get a third person in that.
I'm I'm in favor.
No, but I I just think it's, I think it's a, it's an absolutely necessary program that they're doing and it it and it's so successful. And if it was bigger, it would be even more successful.
So uh our family school liaison.
Yeah.
Counselors, I mean, the, yeah, and you're right, the 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 workload um they have is tremendous. And and guess what, in the previous school division that was in, they were tremendous as well, the workloads were were great. So finding uh part of the challenge is finding qualified people and people who are dedicated to take those positions and and step in. Uh especially in rural communities, that is that is a challenge, but um I think um eh you know, we are looking at. And the government has been releasing some grants and this is this is the way that they're going about it now, right? They 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 don't dedicate money, but they'll say, hey, there's a grant here, if you want to apply for it, you can. And um for instance, last year, we applied for a mental health grant, which we were able to secure.
And it's usually project-based, correct?
Yeah, and it's project-based and and time-sensitive, like it needs to be done, let's say, in two or three years and and accounted for. Um but there but the need that we've seen as educators. Post twenty twenty, like after twenty twenty and with COVID, so I think that families, and I'm not just talking about students. Like I want to be really clear here, this isn't just about students, because the the challenges and the supports that we have to provide to parents. On a daily basis, parents who are struggling with regulating their behaviors or how they deal with their kids at home. And the supports that we that then come into the school, because because the issues that parents have don't stop when the child crosses the boundary of the front door. Of the house and gets on the school bus and comes to school. So we we've we we're finding ways to support parents as well, you know, and so that's why that workload just seems to be expanding more and more. Because the role that mandate of teachers and of and of schools is expanding as well, so.
And once they're dealing with students, they they can't just drop them and move on to to the new students that are that are having the need, so it's it's ongoing. And they have to kind of go through the program and complete it and be ready to come off it before you can bring someone somebody new on. Because they're just, they only can handle a certain size case load. Okay, thank you.
Coach Walk, and then followed, Custer, Cromwell and Chum.
Uh Superintendent, going back to your comment about trades and and lack of uh teachers even in the in the area. Um we talk a lot when we're looking at economic economic development and sustainability, but rural returns to rural. Um it's my understanding that the rap program is back, um can you guys elaborate on how many students are involved, how they get involved? Um and then how do you engage local employers to participate in the in the program?
Sure, so um it's a great question and it's a great question, because I prepared for this one, uh so. So we had two hundred and fifty-six credits come out of our rap program last year, which is uh quite an accomplishment. Um and.
How many students does that equate to?
That equates to sixty, no, yeah, yeah, sorry, um yeah, well, they're not all like five credits in most cases, but it's about sixty students. So of course, you know, that's something we want to redouble our efforts into, like, you know, it's not that we're saying that's enough, if you will. What we are saying, though, is that um eh we're seeing students getting re-engaged with that. So it's almost like that someone turned a tap off for a while because of the circumstances we were in, in terms of society with COVID. But now kids, families, communities are saying, we kind of want to return to, you know, yeah, and getting the opportunities to get out. Into the community with employers, so students who are interested would approach their their um sent their central uh quarterback for rap within the school. So EPC, there's a designated person that's in charge of that, they could eh they could actually approach their principal or any administrator, uh show an interest in that. And yeah, Boyle does this as well, and then what happens is that coordinator finds matches for students within the community, within the business community. So they reach out um as per contacts, you know, historical contacts or trying new contacts, so they approach new businesses around that as well. Uh something else that we're um going to be revisiting and it it, you know, it's a conversation that I think is a bit of an obvious one. It's just with our post-secondary institutions that are around us and what kind of dual credit opportunities we could get with them as well. Which is a little different than rap in the trades, but also provides like an inroad for students into things like nursing. Or, you know, counseling careers or other things that could be offered through post-secondary dual credit programs, teaching, yeah.
Thank you.
A follow-up, um you said the students have to approach, do you guys do any um uh advertising for these programs?
Outward bound.
Yeah.
Do you want to talk?
Don't go.
Okay, so um branding and the idea of promoting and branding is something that um we're reviewing.
Sorry, just to specify, do you guys uh educate the students on this?
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, when we have like um programming, open house, course changes, course choice type of events. As students are coming in, it's something that the school, the principal and and staff members talk about. But what I was talking about too was the idea that we want to recommit as a school division to branding and promoting externally, outside of the school boundaries. And into the community, because the other piece of it is around having the partnership from the business side. So sometimes businesses aren't aware that, you know, what is rap and how, you know, how does it exist and what is, but if they knew that they had grade twelve. Let's say, students who are interested in being a heavy-duty mechanic or, you know, something to involve with like oilfield or or pipeline, they would, you know, be active too. So we're we're looking at creating a little branding campaign for that.
Thank you, I think it's pretty amazing, the idea that, you know, you could have students finish up grade twelve and and leave with a couple of credits that are either university-bound. Or trade school-bound or, you know, entryway into nursing and I I think even principal maybe has talked about some things that occurred in a. I've talked to her about things that occurred to private prior school that she was at around the nursing program there and certainly there's need. Custer, uh Cromwell, you're on deck.
Well, fortunately, I don't have a hard question for you, I'm actually going to congratulate you, I'm looking at your numbers for Grassland in Rochester, for example. And what, I I want to explain how lucky your school board actually is to have thirty-eight students currently in Rochester. With four teachers and four support staff, well, that is phenomenal, I know that. In Northern Lights, we're doing with far less for students, far less for faculty. Uh for example, last year, last school year, we had approximately twenty-five students in Wander River with one faculty member. And our principal was our K six teacher with one to two support staff depending on the day. So the fact that you guys are, are running such full, in my opinion, full. Schools is amazing for your outline communities and how important that is to continue. Such an amazing program for those little towns, I, I, I just love it.
So just to, just to respond and, and with all due respect to any of the other. School boards around us because everybody has their challenges, right? And, and I can't speak to that, but what I can say is that our board's dedication has been to putting. Dollars where they matter most, which is in front of students and that is. Uh evident by the numbers, whether it's support or whether it's teaching F T E, having them as close to the students as possible. And so that they could have the greatest impact and impact and there's an educational philosopher out there named John Hattie who says that. If you're gonna make an impact and improve achievement and results and, or hope to move them in the right direction. That, you know, those resources need to be as close to kids as possible, so.
I had one more comment that I just wanted to make before we get any other questions, but one thing we've. Forgot, I guess, to put in our slides is that we also serve three hutterite colonies within the county. So there's two uh obviously within Athabasca area and one at the Boyle area. Uh as well, we have two more, one in Smoky Lake and one that is being established in the Thorhill area, so. We are well-served by our hutterite colonies, I believe um. New Pine Colony in the Boyle area would be the one that has the most students, I believe there's twenty-one this year. Uh with that number rising as well, so. Very uh strong numbers, I know they are um very good county members of, of this county of Athabasca.
Um, just wanna say, you know, I've always, as a parent, always really appreciated the collaboration between the county. And Aspen View schools, especially when it comes to our family liaison workers, cause. As noted, they do great work, um and as you guys know, the employment demographics of some of our small uh outlining areas. Fluctuate from year to year and which of course affects enrollment and those types of things. And uh in recent media reports that indicate the Aspen View schools is once again considering. Initiating the viability studies on a couple of schools, Grassland and Rochester. Uh I know Mister Castrino, you've spoke on. The role of the division in building that community, things like initiatives, partnerships and sustainability, is there anything else that you can add to that?
Um, y- yeah, I mean, I'm getting back to the initial point, I think your question is. You know, our, our board is just doing its due diligence, um it, it made a pledge last year to review within a year and so that, that's what's happening, we're gonna. As an administration, put together that information for our board, so they have all the information that they need. But it's just part of that due diligence uh process, I think in terms of, of the other piece of attracting. Let's say in retaining staff or promoting communities, um. You know, I think we need to take the message outside of our community, if that makes sense, so. Um what we're dedicated to and, and Board Chair Nicopelo uh. Cause referred to it just a little bit earlier, but starting just after the Christmas break, we're gonna be heading to universities, heading to college campuses. And in personally promoting our communities and personally promoting uh um, you know, our programming and our employment offerings. So that's something that we are doing to try and specifically, you know, support specific communities. The other thing we're gonna do with, which is something that not a lot of boards do, is we're gonna take jobs with us, so. Um when, when, so what I mean by that is when we go to recruit, um we're gonna have active jobs. That we will be looking to match to people on a spec, on us, like on that day, so it's almost like a little bit of a model. Of how international schools recruit, so if you know anything about that, like with international schools, you go to a fair. And when you go to a fair, you bring a resume and there are active jobs that international schools are trying to fill and they could offer you a job on that day, so. These are just different things that we're trying.
I, I can name at least one teacher who you've recruited in that very method, so I've got Councillor Chamsik, Mins. And then Gerlick.
I just wanna follow up, um having uh. Gone through a vitality uh viability study a couple of years ago. Um I've always really appreciated the collaboration and the board's efforts of. Having those honest conversations, uh the second thing I'd like to really note on. Is um also being a part of parent council for many, many years. Um always the really big support of Aspen View, supporting our parent councils with our initiatives, being able to support our teachers. And building those programs and um having that. Um availability and always having those conversations are vitally important to the health of our schools and rural communities.
So, so we're gonna see council, school councils tonight? In Smoky Lake, because that is a way for us to, to, I, I just use that as a tie-in to promote the event. Uh we're meeting with all kind of school council uh leads, uh with uh board members, myself. Uh we're gonna have some supper, we're gonna hear about uh and, and kind of exchange some of those great things that are happening in each school because I think sometimes. Uh knowing, we just don't know enough, right, about what happened, so it's a good way to get great ideas from other schools, so thank you.
If supper's involved, there might be more than Kelly going. Um, be- before I give the floor to Councillor Mins, earlier, uh the superintendent, you mentioned, you talked about this, you know, behavior regulation and something. Which connects to something else that I was thinking about earlier, uh related to screen time and kids and social media. And again, this is up in the news again recently and so. You know, I think the reports are that Canadian teens spend about half their waking time in front of screens. Excessive screen time, we know is harmful to kids, it's linked to changes in behavior, aggression, impulsivity. And studies show that, you know, if they're spending eight to nine hours a day in front of screens. I will admit, and I think the data, data shows that not all screen time is equal and not all of it is bad. But a lot of it does have really negative effects and so. My understanding is that social media is linked to longer lasting and increased problems in behavior among teens. And generally, the social media is linked to children and teens not developing the necessary cognitive controls to become mature decision makers. And I've read some, some other stuff about, you know, talking about teens not really willing to partake in adult activities in the same level that they might have when. Some of you were younger and some of us. Um what do you, what do you believe the role of division is in protecting children from those harms?
Um I know that a lot of these conversations do happen around the parent council table as well. Um we have uh talked actually last year with a student voice and we talked to kids about. Their thoughts on social media, their access to media, their screen times, that was the grade seven class, um. We also have, uh I believe in January, Safran. Is coming to uh our division, Safran is like a. What's the word I'm looking for? It's, yeah, it's just, it's like a session that they're gonna provide a, for parents um to attend on social media, the effectiveness of it. Um because it doesn't just happen at school, right? It starts at home as well. Um but I know that, you know, a lot of our teachers do promote uh putting your phones down, there's places for phones to go. Um in the schools itself, if the children will find or students will find that uh like, you know, for their streaming apps, let's say like Instagram or something like that. It's uh, what's the word I'm looking for? It's blocked. So they, they get frustrated because they can't, we don't provide like the free wifi for them to, you know, constantly be on those devices. But also, you know, some of those devices they use for competitions in class, like cahoots and stuff like that, so there's that independence, but. Um definitely, I think uh it's communicated by teachers, it's communicated by parents at parent councils. You know, the importance of that, but it's providing just the supports for families. Um and students and having those honest conversations, it begins at home, but honest still having those conversations with the students.
Obviously, you know, home plays a big role in it, but there, really, there's no role, like, the school doesn't have a division-wide. Philosophy, then it's kind of left to individual teachers and schools.
So this is a really uh. Important question and I think it's, it's a topic that's really tricky and I, and I'll. So I, in my principalship, my last principalship, I, I would say that. Part of the issue and, you know, we have stakeholders at all levels, we're stakeholders together uh in a cause. But uh as per the Ed Act, let's say, you know, the parents. Uh are our biggest stakeholder when it comes to the education of students, so um. Sometimes, you know, policy or procedures that are put in at a school level, let's say. Um they need to, not sometimes, but they need to be also, I think, fostered in the home and we need to have that partnership. Because um, you know, I've been in a situation where as a principal, I've had to take a phone away from a student. Because it was being used inappropriately, let's say at school, but I've had a parent. You know, at the end of the day, come to see me, we have a meeting, I, I go to give the phone back to the parent and say, here you go, and the, and the parent says to me. Um could you just, could you, no, can you just hold on to that, just lock it up in your, in your desk for two weeks and I, and I'm like, a little bit puzzled. I, if I, if I get it, uh so-and-so might just grind me down and they'll get it back sooner, so my, my point is that. We, we need that, like, on both sides to be steadfast to the things that you were talking about, Mister Hall, around, or. Around the damages that could be done with inappropriate cell use. Problem is sometimes as adults, and I'll just include myself because I'm not gonna talk about anybody else, I don't wanna get in trouble, I'm gonna talk about myself, not even my wife here, so. I, I like to scroll in the evenings on my phone. So if I'm scrolling on my phone in the evenings and I'm, and I'm saying to my child who's eight, hey, grab that reading that you're supposed to be doing. That level literacy stuff that your teacher gave you and his response is, but daddy, I just, I wanna play my dinosaur game, right? I wanna do my. You know, it's much tougher, so it's about, it's about that united effort with parents to just say like, hey, let's, let's try and model some of that.
Right, certainly phones permit us, you know, adults and kids to exclude ourselves from our community, right, whether it's our family or people around us and. And so um. You know, yeah, it's a, it's a complicated issue. Uh we have Councillor Mins and Councillor Gerlick with questions and then I think we can continue the discussion, I mean, more casually over lunch, because I think you're gonna join us and have lunch and. Hopefully we can come back in here and, and do that, um the, the tidbit that I read that I wanna share and then I'm gonna give it to, to, to Councillor Mins. Research at the London School of Economics in twenty uh fifteen showed that in Britain, so it's a little bit older, but I mean, I don't think the results would be wildly different. The schools had introduced some form of mobile phone ban, saw an improvement in student performance by an average of six percent. Uh with provincial achievement test coming, there's a win right there for, for you. Anyway, um Councillor Mins.
I just uh, just wanna go back to the, to the rap program again. With uh, I, I'm a very huge advocate of that rap program due to the fact that uh with my background with Athabasca County, we, we. I worked with, worked with many rap students. At the public workshop and uh under the uh heavy duty mechanic apprenticeship and uh. I have two kids who went through the rap program and there's not a program out there that I don't think that is, is, is so huge that, that. In two years, they, they gain enough, they gain enough uh hours. That when they do go to the apprenticeship, they have fifteen to two thousand hours already underneath their belt, it's huge. The kids find out if they actually. If this is a type of, of work that they wanna get into, I've only seen actually one rap student that. Went into it and said, okay, this is not my bag of. It's not my mix of done, hey, you know, and that, that, that's such a, a huge. Uh entry into, into adulthood that all of a sudden, you're not gonna waste your time going into summer apprenticeship, you don't really wanna go into. And uh. I've always been a big proponent for it to, to get it back into Athabasca County, cause it's very important uh. And looking at it in that way, I guess the other question I had is uh. Housing. Keep hearing housing, 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 we can't get people because we don't have a house and, and, and there's no place to rent and all this other stuff. What's your thoughts on that? Like, like where, how is that ever gonna be fixed? As a, as a, you know, as, as, as. Oh, I'm looking for the right words here right now, but. How does this get fixed? Because we're, we can't build hoses for everybody.
No, um so just as an example, when I was looking for housing in the summer. I would set up an appointment, but someone had something, let's say, online that I saw uh to go look for rental. And I would set an appointment and say, I'm coming to Athabasca tomorrow to see this, I'll meet you at one o'clock and then I would. Text in the morning just to make sure we were still on and they would say, no, it's rented, sorry, and I'd be like, but I was coming up there to see it anyway from Edmonton, sorry, it's a tight market. So. So conversely, if, if, you know, if you talked about, let's say, uh Westlock or Lacklebish. I could have found a furnished one-bedroom apartment for about eight hundred bucks with most of the utilities included. And so the biggest piece is like the, the small story walk-up apartment type of, of places, so. Um I don't know if they're, you know, how could we introduce more of that into this area, so it wasn't all like single-family or fourplex type dwelling, right? Which is really the predominant um type of real estate that's available, that's what I've noticed anyway.
Yeah, yeah, cause I know it's, it's a huge, it's a huge thing, we even look at. You know, I was really surprised to hear about, about the teachers, but I know with the, with the doctors and the nurses and that and, and the recruitment on that end. I guess the other question I had is, is. Let's say you have a student that's gonna take off from school in grade twelve and go into, into uh teaching. And is there any uh. Way of, have you guys looked at maybe saying, okay, we'll, we'll help you along your way as long as you come back and work for us for. Five years or ten years, is there?
We, we've, we have, we've discussed that, but I, I think what we're most proud of is when we look at our schools, the number of kids. That I taught, that are, that are coming back and teaching in our system, like, we're really, really proud of that and that's. You know, that's one of the tough things, but I wanna talk about what you're asking about with the housing piece because. Education is more than just the building of, 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 you know, the, the building itself and having kids come in and, and we do the teaching. Uh so this is an example, at the provincial level, we're looking at all of the mandate letters. We're looking at health, um infrastructure, um, um, there's, there's a number of different education, advanced education. And we're identifying those things that are, that are directly impacting education. And so at the provincial level, what we're trying to do is set up meetings with all of those ministers. So that we can get together and say, hey, come on, we, we need to have some collaboration between, between ministries. I, I always thought it was just as simple as, you know, Minister of Education walks across the hall, has a conversation with the Minister of Health and says, okay, you know what? We can collaborate on this, this and this. That's not the case, I don't, and I'm quite sure why that is, but you know, it should be much simpler than, than it is. Uh it becomes a very complex issue, but I think it's important that we look at all of those ministries and advocate each one of them because. They all have a direct impact on, on the, on the education piece. I'd like to comment as well on the uh, with the comment you made, Brian, around the, the, these things. And I had to use this thing to look up the book that I was looking at and that was one by. It's called The Tech Solution by Dr. Shimi Kang. And it's not, it's, it's, it's wonderful to think that, you know what, in schools, we can just say, okay, put these aside and, and you're not gonna be using them. Except maybe to do a little bit of research or whatever. What we're dealing with today, okay, so in her book, she talks about the, what, what is it that changed? Life for human beings, what was the very first thing and that was the, the, no, actually it was the. The invention of fire, the discovery of fire, that actually changed the physical. How, how human beings actually evolved, so now all of a sudden they could cook their food, they could destroy the bacteria in the food that, you know, through the cooking process. So that physically changed the, the structure of the human being, this is the second thing. When, when I see in the, the, the drugstore or the shopping mall where, where people are handing their phones to. A two-year-old while they're doing their shopping. What she talks about is the white matter that develops in the brain of those kids is not happening. And the white matter is that matter that, that allows kids to make the connections between what they think and what they can say. That's huge and. Parents need to take that, I, I can't do that, I, as an educator, I can talk, I can talk about it. But I can't tell parents, don't allow your two-year-old to be using this, this device. But I think we need to educate parents about that, we need to be talking about it and, and I, and I really appreciate the fact that you raised it because it's, it's an important, it's a really important issue. And I think we're doing a great job in our schools in terms of how we limit the use of the devices. And I think the evidence was when we went into those grade seven classes, the level of maturity that those kids talked about. About the responsibility and how bullying takes, takes place and we need to put them aside and the suggestions that they made. Phenomenal and they get it, they get it, so I, I, I'm really enthused.
So just really quickly, sorry, I see the hand, I, I apologize, but I just wanna add into this point because you mentioned. The struggles, the social problems that students can have around bullying, and this comes back to your uh piece around um. Social work and healthcare and F S L C workers, so it used to be that if you were having struggles at school. Uh around bullying or, or with, you know, social issues, that you could escape those problems for some time. When you went home and you were with your family and you were doing whatever, let's say your evening sports or the weekend or. But now that doesn't happen anymore because, because. The the bullying and the conflict predominantly is happening through the phone and through the apps on the phone. So as a principal, I would come to school on a Monday morning and it would be like. Eight fifteen or whatever, ten after eight and a fight would break out. And I'm like, how could there possibly be? A conflict at this time on a Monday? Then you try to untangle it and what's been happening is it's it's been happening on Snapchat or Instagram for forty eight hours over the weekend. And it just, they take one look at each other inside the school and and the physical stuff. Is on, right? So that is, that is a big part of it. And I'm going to say as a principal, two of the biggest successes I had around behavior and social support was. Closing a campus, closing the school campus so that kids couldn't go. To the McDonald's or the Tim Hortons. This was in an urban setting. It was in a small town. And then the second one was saying there will be no cell phones in classrooms. You can have the cellphone in a backpack because your parents want to keep you safe and so on. But it's not allowed to be in the instructional space because guess what? We have Chromebooks for all of you and we have other devices that you can use in the classroom now. So.
There's an equity piece in there, I think, like you've addressed. So I think Counselor Holland was waving, so I'm going to, Counselor Gerlick, I promised, then Counselor Holland, and then we're going to eat. Because if you're as hungry as I am, we don't want to. Counselor Gerlick.
Yeah.
It's you between us and lunch.
I don't know how many years it is. I've been looking for an opportunity to use a paradigm shift. Uh, but I think we're right on the cusp of that right now, because in our community, in the little community where I'm from, I watch. I'm seeing younger families coming back now, younger people. Before it was a a retirement place where people wanted to be out in the country somewhere. And uh, and you know, a lot of the dwellings and houses are a little more modest. But there are younger people that are coming back and they're 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 looking at the importance of. Of, well, first of all, it's something I can afford. And uh. And uh, and what we're attempting to do is try and make our community look as attractive as it can. And try and encourage and and we right now are putting a brand new roof on our hall. And we'll have that up and running and and be able to have some social activities that we've had for years and and uh. I I just see it coming. And the second point I wanted to make is we never need to look at money spent as an expense. With these younger kids and stuff, it is an investment. And it needs to be made and we have to keep that as a priority.
No. Counselor Holland. You've been very patient. Go ahead.
Worries. Um, I apologize if my voice cracks here a little bit. Um, I was just curious a little bit backing up to the rap program. Um, we have a student who is in high school now, just starting high school. So of course, we're looking at all the different opportunities that are available to him. And we attended a seminar at that Athabasca Employment Services put on October nineteen. And they brought in the uh, representative from apprenticeship and industry training. And put together an amazing uh, presentation and it was very informative and their support. Um, that they're willing to offer um, the schools and families and students with resumes and all of those things. Uh, was so impressive. So it's just curious, are have you partnered with those particular individuals to be able to get that? Message out um, to students?
You know what? I I would have to double check about that specific uh. Agency, I I don't want to say yes, because I don't know. Um, but if we haven't, we will. How about that? Like, uh. Uh, but I'll have to double check. I'm not sure. Sorry.
Oh, no, I would appreciate.
Career next generations, yes, we have. I'm I'm being told, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it just, it was just amazing to hear that they were so willing to help the children with their resumes and all of those things that. Um, I just thought it was very impressive. And thanks very much for all the information provided today as well.
Um, I'm going to adjourn the meeting to lunch, but do you have any uh, from our delegation, any final words you want to impart before we take it to a more casual discussion?
Thanks for the opportunity and for uh, hosting us. No, thank you. We really appreciate it. We look forward to to working together.
I think there's a lot of opportunity and we're glad that you're able to come and spend, you know, a significant amount of time with us and uh, there's a lot of work we can do together. So. Let's uh, the council, we forty five minutes today, okay with that? So we'll come back at half past one. And uh. For our delegation lunches in the. There we go. It is eighteen minutes after. One, just checking which clock got changed. Eighteen minutes after one and I'd like to reconvene the the county council meeting for the fourteenth of November, twenty twenty three. We uh, just finished the two delegations that were number four point one and four point two in your agenda. The next item of business uh, following that is item number seven point nine, and that's on page one forty three. There is a recommendation there. Is there anybody prepared to move the recommendation or an alternate motion? Counselor Chamsick. The recommended motion? Good. Counselor Chamsick has moved that the council thanked the Wandering River, Plomond and Wandering River Community Resource Society. For attending as a delegation and direct administration to include their request in the grant policy review. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counsel Crumel, floor is yours.
Thank you. I have. Two, two questions and I I would. Like to uh, ask administration and I realize we're going to need time to get the answers for that. Um, now that the PW. CRS stated that they are no longer a drop in and now a quote daycare. Do they still qualify under our grant program? Question number one. And question number two, because they made the comment that their floors are hazardous, does that put us into any liability? Being a county owned plot of land and county owned facility. If so, is there any action that is required by the county in order to move forward? Now, I don't see that out of. In likeness or to causing the issue for the club, which is very important to. The people in in my area and others, but they made some comments that really. Made me have to think about how that fifth. Currently under. Policy or if we need to even amend the policy for that change.
Council, we all agreed, okay with admin doing the research and following up with that information for us. Everybody's on side. You just take that as a request, CEO, and bring that back in an email or something. Um. Okay, other other comments? Counsel Smith.
Just wondering, like, like, so they're using our our building there, like, do they? Like. Is there any interaction between them and and Athabasca County or or is there? Like, like what, how how all of a sudden can somebody just walk in and start using one of our buildings and?
But I think it sounds like it's a building that we own that they lease for zero and.
I know where I I know exactly where the building is and has been there for a lifetime, but that I can remember, but it's it's like. For us not to know that the flooring is done, for us not to know that.
So is it, is it something you'd want to um, amend the motion to have the county facilities? To include in the county facilities review?
Yeah.
Okay, let me, so if we. Counselor Chamsik made the original motion, Counselor Minz amend to also include. To include the building in a county facility, facilities review or facilities condition review? CAO is that? Further discussion on the amendment or the main motions? I, I think, I mean, for me, I think it's important that we, they they fell off that list, not, you know, by design, but by accident. We've been supporting them for a number of years through. Through uh, the Community Hall Assistance Grant. And I I think, you know, it in terms of the sustainability of small communities and how we use our resources to. Keep them viable and vibrant and. I hope that as we go through this, we can figure out a way that um. Whether it makes sense to to continue providing some support. In the situation, Lacklubish is obviously very different because they're using part of a preexisting building and it's already being heated and already has utilities and. Like it's, this is a standalone property in my memory. But um. Counselor uh, Capitanic.
Um, I just have a question to the chair to the counselor for Division Six. Um, prior to. Us receiving this information today about it, I feel becoming a. I don't want to use the word daycare, but it is now a.
What's an after school?
Are the, are, is there, are, is there anything that registers them as, you know, a charity or as a a legal entity amongst themselves? That. Would be compromised by doing that? And if you don't know, that's okay. I just, I'm kind of wondering.
Through the chair to Counselor Capitanic, one of the questions I asked him was about. Accreditation and they mentioned licensing and I'm not, I I really don't know now that they publicly said they're a daycare, not a drop in. I don't know if their old model fits or not anymore. And I I really don't want to bring anything up that could jeopardize a club. In any of our communities, and I agree with the reef, we need to find a way to to help of of those small communities. But there is definitely uh, some homework that needs to be done right now. On. Really where they fall and and if they're falling under the right umbrella, you're you're.
They're a society, though, so like the comparable ones around in the town. Our societies as well, so it would be, does what you're doing meet the objects of your society, your state of purpose?
But I think that was the question that they were a society as a drop in, now is that society valid as a?
No, yes, legally, there's still a society. That doesn't evaporate. It's. Is what they're doing okay within the the parameters of why the society was set up, right? Right? The the legal piece of it, they won't evaporate.
Uh, follow up just to uh, counsel and CEO. Um. Is there any way we can find out how the town contributes to the the daycare society within the town? Just for comparison. For just for comparison.
Ms. Chairman, um, through the counselor, yeah, we probably could. In fact, we'd probably. Um. In part of this review of this, we'd probably do a. Open up a can of worms kind of research on seeing what everyone's doing and and. And who is and who isn't and I. Some of you raised uh, FCSS, um, I, you know, where I've been from, a lot of this is funded by FCSS. But I think the whole thing has to come back to you in a big picture.
And if there's to be support, I mean, it's looking at what are the right avenues, what are the right. Structures, I mean, you know, in in Boyle, we provide, I think, some money to the fitness center. Um, I don't know, I'm sure they were here and we. Did, um, you know, there's a youth center attached to that, I think. There's another youth center downtown here. Are they separate? They're not same same building, different things. Anyway, Counselor Capitanic, you had the floor.
Last, my last point. Um, so with that being said, if we can get that information. Um, what I'm hearing from them is that they started charging the fee because they needed. Help to pay the bills. So if we can find the right funding model for them, might actually eliminate the need to charge a fee, which would keep them under the umbrella that they're in. It's all right. All I want to do, I want to go down that road.
Other customers.
Just real quick, uh, I, excuse me, I agree with the CEO sometimes. Sometimes you hate to open up that Pandora's box, but. To do this properly and to get the right funding or 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 see if we need to fund it or, you know, if if it's after school care, I know. People actually have to pay for after school care and stuff like that. So it's it's, it is opening up the box, but but. And it could be a win lose situation when you do it.
Um, so there is an amendment. Is there any objection to the amendment to include billing uh, the the building in the county facilities uh, condition review? Saying. Your amendment was to include uh, this building in county facilities conditioner view? Given there's no amendments, we'll consider that adopted as part of the main motion. Um, any further and final discussion on the main motion? Seeing none on the motion to thank the Plomond and Wandering River Community Resource Society for attending as a delegation and direct administration to include. The request in the grant review policy and in to include the building in a county facilities condition review, all those in favor? I. And opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. That still feels weird.
And we, we do not need a motion to have admin do that research.
I think that's part of the uh, if we're all on the same mind, it seems to me to be part of the. The policy review.
Thank you.
Next item is seven point one zero. That is the delegation with Aspen View Public Schools. Um, there is a motion to, or so there's recommended motion to thank Aspen View Schools for attending as a delegation. Is there anyone willing to move that? Counselor Minz has moved discussion. Counsel Gerlick, floor is yours.
I would like to see if there could be any consideration. Perhaps our boosting or. Our funding for FCSS uh, for the school liaison position, if we could help with that because. Uh. Like I say, it's, there's the, there's a number of people that are on on that now. And there just aren't enough openings for new students and there's certainly a need. And they do especially need to have a little gender. Uh, diversity, diversity there as well, because a lot of the boys. You know, don't.
Need a mentor who's.
To be a mentor, yeah, they need a male mentor.
So will you um, bring that up through our budget discussions as well? Because that's also kind of the place to. I will. And I'm wondering. Thinking through that, so we should maybe, once we deal with the main motion. Directed through another motion to admin to just explore it as part of the budget consideration. So it, they've got direction and it comes. Comes back to us in that fashion. Kelly, then.
Well, and I think one of the. That's fine. Oh, I think one of the hurdles is, of course, is, you know, um, primarily is reaching that demographic. That male demographic and trying to find those people in our region to even be applicable for.
For the second motion, I'm going to stop you and we'll be back to the first one, which is the thanking them for showing up, Counsel Anderson. Okay, the only um. I personally really enjoyed that they've had some thoughtful answers to the comments and questions. I think that councils uh. Questions were thoughtful and nice. I'm hoping when we thank delegations, that we can make a habit as a council of um. Maybe a letter going out or a card prepared by admin and then I'll sign it after the meeting and it goes. Just so that um, that courtesy of they get something followed up in the mail said at the meeting, thank you for being here. Um, I. Yeah, I um. I still a little puzzled why they don't have their own division wide policy on the cellphone thing, because it seems like it's a. An opportunity to make a positive step in making the whole place a happier place to be, but um, that's their their jam to to work out. Um, so if there's no further questions on the motion to uh. No further comments on that main motion. If you're ready for the question, the motion to thank Aspen View Public Schools for attending as a delegation, all those in favor?
I.
The uh, opposed, motion is adopted nine and zero. And then Counselor Gerlick wanted to make a motion to request that administration. Uh, explore. Increased funding through FCSS for the mentorship program.
Yes.
Discussion on that, Counsel Chamsick, then I'll. You're good. Uh, Counsel Anderson.
Thanks. Um, I know previously we've talked about. Different ways that those kind of budget increases would come through the committee. And up through the budget process, just um, then they have. That. Ground level um, input from the FCSS staff to make sure that the resources we're allocating. Are being allocated in the correct way. And so I would. Um, advocate for that. The committee members to take that back to the board for FCSS rather than council directing administration, just. Put money there without it coming through that board level.
In the interest of time and expediency, would you like to make an amendment to add the word subject to approval by the FCSS board? Okay.
I did not hear what Counselor Anderson was saying.
Oh, sorry, was your microphone on? Oh, sorry, was your microphone on? Uh, the, do you wanna repeat it or are we moving to the summary?
An amendment would contradict the original motion, so that would be incorrect.
CEO.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the motion was to direct administration. Administration, uh, intended to refer it to the FCSS board, so there you go.
It, it probably, yeah, to me also kind of makes, would make more sense if the FCSS committee was coming to us and saying, we'd like this, but. Um, given that it's, uh, the middle of November and we've got budget coming, I'm, I'm open to, let's move this along. Cuz I think we agree with what's happening, but.
Yeah, we did have actually fairly extensive discussion, voted at our last FCSS meeting and we. Did suggest to them that we were gonna bring the idea to council to see if it met with any positive. There are any positive tones and it could be done in a more official basis. So we have a meeting coming up next Monday, so we'll deal with it there.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion to explore, to a direct administration to explore increased funding through FCSS for the mentorship program? All those in favor? Opposed, the motion is adopted, the count is eight and one. All right, it would be in order to have a motion to enter into closed session. Counsel Cromwell has moved, do we enter into a closed session discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted, either it's, uh. We are reconvening the November fourteenth county council meeting after a brief recess, having left closed session. Regarding a light, um, item number eleven point one, Council Minz. With your microphone on.
To, uh, deny the, um, motion to deny a request to lower the utility bill eight zero five two point one two.
It's Council Minz has made a motion to deny the request to adjust the water bill on account number eight zero five two point one two. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question on the adoption of the motion to deny the request to adjust the water bill on account eight zero five two point one two, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and one and the motion is adopted. On item number eleven point two, that's Counsel Wallack.
Do you make a request to the healthcare retention committee?
Oh, God, I think you're gonna postpone this.
Oh, sorry.
Till a formal request comes from the healthcare retention.
Yep, got it.
Sorry, I tried to write them down a bit. Counsel Wallack has moved that we postpone this, uh, discussion until a formal request comes from the healthcare retention committee. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none on the adoption, the question is on the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? And opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Item number eleven point three, Counsel Gerlick. You were going to accept for information?
Yes.
Counsel Gerlick has moved, we accept the update under eleven point three for information. All those, any further discussion? Seeing none on the, the option of that motion, all those in favor? And opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. And on eleven point four, uh, we're. Looking for a motion to accept that for information, Counsel Cromwell. Has made a motion to accept, uh, the in- information update under eleven point four for information, all those in favor? And opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. The meeting is adjourned at thirty minutes past two.